This workshop for October 26, 2021 on the Agricultural Reserve Tier Back to Order. We are in comments by members of the public. As a reminder, we are going to rotate through the three different areas of the building, the commission chambers, atrium, and the Makiti Conference Room. And I'll turn it over now to Commissioner McBernard for comments by members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first person will be Barbara Roth, followed by Beth Rapaport, and followed by former Commissioner Karen Marcus.
Good afternoon, Ms. Roth. You're recognized, and each speaker will have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kerner, Vice Mayor Weinroth, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Barbara Roth, 6776 Rienzo, 33467. Today I speak as a Vice President of Cobra. May I?
Please, if it makes it easier to speak without a mask, absolutely appropriate.
Thank you. I had the great pleasure of joining several of you when we had that marvelous tour of Starkey Road. I believe three of you were companions on that day, and what beautiful productive enterprises we saw. But as we drove there, did you happen to notice the "Welcome to the Agricultural Reserve" signs along the way? Those signs were put up five and a half years ago. The then-county engineer, George Webb, said in the Sun Sentinel, "We want people to know. We want people to recognize that this is still the Agricultural Reserve." That's a mere five and a half years ago. I remember feeling a particular pride when I saw those signs go up. I don't live in the Ag Reserve. I didn't live in the Ag Reserve then, but I thought, this is really something when a county, my county, Palm Beach County, takes pride in an area to the point where they put up signs. So if you haven't seen them, I hope that you'll take that opportunity. It spoke of a commitment that this body, that body of five and a half years ago, made to the county in recognizing the compact that was made years earlier through the bond issue and with the growth that has occurred. I'm not saying the Ag Reserve is the only noteworthy area of Palm Beach County. Of course it's not. There are marvelous, wonderful areas, and as a planning commissioner, I've had the great good fortune to learn about many of those over these last four years that I've been on planning commission. But the intense push for increased population in the Ag Reserve tells us that we need to look at this area very specifically. I've also heard the word "buffer" used today, and you're going to hear that a lot certainly from our environmental friends, bless them. But the issue of a buffer makes it very distinctive, very different, and I am concerned about what I'm hearing this morning, so much so that I'm going to use some of my time, and I'm so sorry about this. We need to meet the needs of the residents of the Ag Reserve. We have residents who are members of Cobra, who are family communities, and we know that we're going to make some adjustments to uses that will fulfill their needs. We're willing to work on that and discuss it and negotiate it, but we cannot throw out the whole framework. This is a framework that has polished Palm Beach County's reputation, and I urge you, I implore you, to make that your legacy. Keep that special. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Roth. And just a reminder to keep your minutes within a three-minute timeframe, we have a lot of public speakers here today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Cobra has four decades' experience managing growth in the area. Today, nine of our 114 HOAs and 5,000 of our 48,000 households are in the Ag Reserve. We ask you to please consider our positions as you consider Ag Reserve policy. We collected over 1,100 signatures online supporting these positions in one business day, and we'll save your inboxes and email you a summary. Like the Commissions before you, you've been presented with difficult decisions about the future of the area, but it's you that will be remembered as the ones writing the final chapter of this story for generations to come. Some important facts: The Ag Reserve makes up 40% of Cobra's area. The largest portion of unbuilt Preserve parcels are in Cobra's area. By size, those parcels are federal bond, county water management district, and AGR-PUDs. Lifting of conservation easements and waiving of Preserve requirements cannot be allowed. Protected parcels serve specific purposes and represent promises made to taxpayers. It's critical to protect and preserve sensitive lands, and to forbid future development west of 441. Our aquifer and residents depend on it. Buffers and open space are also important around our residential communities. When our residents are asked why they live in the Ag Reserve, they mention the Ag vibe, sunsets over the fields, and intangible things that make extra driving and higher cost of living worthwhile. This value is in part created by Ag and equestrian businesses, and it's not just the property values or monetary contributions from the taxes they pay, the jobs they create, and the goods they buy, but a value that cannot be monetized, quality of life. More must be done to support these businesses, reduce restrictions, and mitigate their challenges of simply just trying to conduct business. A community cannot be successful without proper infrastructure. We've been a donor area. Millions in impact fees and property taxes used to improve other parts of the county. Yes, the park, middle school, and library are underway, but amenities standard in Wellington, Boca, Coral Springs are missing. Ice rinks, pools, water parks, event space, arenas, and path systems for walkers, cyclists, Ag and equestrian. Fire stations, connector roads, neighborhood parks, and rural parkways are planned but not yet built. Today's services and amenities are based on the 60-40, and even with that limitation, are failing our residents. Infrastructure can no longer come after development, and we can't consider altering the Preserve ratio while operating in this deficit. These things must be resolved before density above what has already been approved can be considered. Of the 48,000 housing units in Cobra's communities, half are all age and half are age-restricted. There's multifamily housing already approved but not yet built in the Ag Reserve, and there's more affordable and workforce housing in Cobra's boundaries than any other incorporated area. Industrial use is not compatible with Res or Ag, should not be contemplated here. A new category of restricted industrial should be considered to facilitate desired businesses and exclude uses such as warehouses and distribution centers. We don't suggest use it or lose it to the commercial cap, as the build-out needs to be well-timed. We look forward to collaborating with you as these discussions evolve. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
We have Commissioner Karen Marcus, followed by Professor Hayes, followed by Dagmar Roth.
Good afternoon now. I'm Karen Marcus. I'm here on behalf of Sustainable Palm Beach County. I think we sent you all a letter yesterday with our position, and of course, on the Board of Sustainable Palm Beach County is a revered group of folks who have a lot of history with what happens, has happened in Palm Beach County. And of course, our message was, make no changes. And let me tell you, after listening to some of the discussion today, I was, I'm sorry, Commissioner McKinley's not here. She said 21 years ago, she had a couple of kids, and they were this age. 21 years ago, I was her age when we started and as one of the authors of the Ag Reserve. And there was a reason it was the Ag Reserve. It's because of its climate and its soil type. It's not, we just picked it out of the wind and said, this is great. I was actually at a meeting with the former Ag Commissioner one day, with Commissioner Valache, and he was talking to the Piro folks, and he said, well, why don't you go to Amakali or somewhere else? And they said, you don't understand. It never freezes here, and they have the best soil type. And so that's why it was the Ag Reserve. I'd encourage you to have more public comment from the residents, from the historical side of it. It was the Conservation Fund who went out and acquired these properties. We hired them as the county commission, and they went out. We had a lot of competition from GL, who was offering to pay more than the county could, which is why we didn't get as much of the property that we really wanted to. But I really think the one thing that I had said the whole time when I was sitting up there and that we really never implemented is what Commissioner Sacks said in terms of using IFIS. We need to go out there and help them farm. This could be such a successful area because of those two very basic things, the soil and the climate, and that's not going to change. So what we need to do is come up with programs to help them farm. And that Future Farmer of America that we talked about, Commissioner Sacks, they're out there. I'm surprised nobody's growing hemp out there. It'd be a perfect location, and certainly a very prosperous financial one. So I encourage you to take a deep breath, maybe have a few more roundtables with citizens who, a lot of them had to leave this morning, who couldn't be here to finish the dialogue. This is a really important project. The last thing I'll say is, when we went out and sold this bond issue, we sold it with the performance measures. We're going to do this with 100 million. These are the rules we're going to have in place to make sure it supports the farming and the agriculture we did. That's what we told the voters. This is a very important message that you're going to be sending to voters if you decide to change what the original intent of the Ag Reserve was. We did two separate bond issues that election. We did the Ag Reserve that included the environmentally sensitive lands, and we did an Arts and Culture. People in Palm Beach County will support you if you do what you say you're going to do, and so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Hayes. I'm the Director of the Institute for Design and Construction at Florida Atlantic University and full-time faculty in the School of Architecture with a focus on urban design and teaching urban design in the thesis year of the Bachelor of Architecture program. Today, I'm here on behalf of President John Kelly responding to an invitation to add some comment for what you're considering. And I represent the School of Architecture, the Department of Urban and Regional Planning, and the Department of Public Administration today. You all are at a decision point. There's clearly something that needs to happen. Staff did a very excellent presentation on the state of current affairs, but as many of you have commented on and asked about, 20-plus years have elapsed, and it's time to take stock. Your university, your public research university welcomes the opportunity to participate in the dialogue. We have an opportunity to support you and an opportunity to train the next generation of planners, designers, architects, and urban designers. All of the decisions you're about to make have significant impacts on policy, on the spatial design of where we live, work, and play, as well as implementation over the next couple of decades. And so I would encourage you to think about the opportunity you have before you in terms of being able to engage. Engage with the next set of designers, engage with potentially some future leaders, and to think about the opportunity, as we've come full circle from an agricultural reserve that started as an idea in response to the community and now has to take stock of the next generation, and consider what is the appropriate way to proceed in the Ag Reserve. There's been a lot of good questions. All of these questions, we can assist you with visualization and giving you some feedback and giving you a chance to kick the tires, if you will, about these policy and spatial things that you're considering. We've done a number of visioning exercises. I submitted five slides today, but you have them somewhere. The lady that was sitting here have them. I encourage you to look at them. They're a record of what we've done in the past, but we're offering you a resource that you can use to assist you in making informed decision-making. We're not substituting ourselves for consultants. We want to be on the team with staff and the team with you so that you can make informed decisions going forward and see if it is, in fact, appropriate to spend the resources on a consultant. We welcome the opportunity to team with you. Thank you for the time today.
Thank you, Professor. Just one moment. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I wouldn't mind having him quickly go through the slides that he brought. I think, you know, they're our highest institution of education in Palm Beach County. I'd like to hear what the professor has to say.
Thank you for that. Okay, well, as I mentioned, we're here talking about the Ag Reserve workshop and want to be a constituent, and we are one of your stakeholders. The future awaits at FAU, and there will be people that will graduate from FAU over the next few years that will play a role in what you're considering, whether it's an active participatory role or whether it is to experience the space in the community that comes of this effort. So here's a little background about FAU. 30,000 students, 6,000 campuses, approaching 200,000 alumni, number-one most diverse public university in the state of Florida, and a growing group of schools and efforts focused on the built and the public environment. Next slide, please. The other point I want to make here is one about academic service. I mentioned that I teach urban design in the thesis year, which is the fifth year of a nationally accredited architecture program. We have a responsibility in all of the design curriculums that each of our students have to experience at least one semester of service learning. We do this by engaging with the community in exactly these kinds of projects. It may not completely mesh with your timeline, but academic service learning is something where the students get a chance to be involved in real-world issues and problems and broaden their thinking prior to going out into the world, and this is something that I think would also create a win-win for the board and Palm Beach County staff because we'd have a chance to really look at the what-if question.
Professor, if I could just encourage you to, you're getting some extra latitude because of requests of a Commissioner, but we have a lot of people waiting.
Thank you. I have one more slide.
Okay.
I am sensitive to your comments. I'm passionate about this, and I do appreciate the time. There should be one more slide. And so this is just an example of some recent community engagement in academic service learning projects, and you'll see there's a bunch of different municipalities here. And all of these were a combination of not just the School of Architecture, but urban and regional planning and public administration. Thank you, Commissioner, for asking to see the slides. I appreciate the time, and I'll come back sometime and answer questions out of respect for those that follow me.
Thank you, Professor. And Mayor, thank you for that latitude. I just really wanted to highlight that we've got this wonderful resource in our community. We should take advantage of it, and between what FAU and their Urban and Regional Planning Department can do in conjunction with the University of Florida's IFIS program, we oftentimes look outside to hire consultants or professionals when we've got this resource in our community between the two universities, and I hope that we take advantage of that. Thank you, Professor.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Good afternoon. My name is Dagmar. I've been a member of Cobra for almost 30 years, and I've lived next to the Ag Reserve for almost 40 years. Four things that Cobra has always backed up was to maintain the 60-40 development pattern. Don't lift any conservation easements off of a piece of property. I think it's very sad that taxpayer dollars were used to pay for a bond to purchase properties, and then somehow, because of some kind of language glitch, the county had to sell property that was actually purchased with monies from their constituents. Please don't lift those conservation easements. I know you have one knocking on the door real hard right now. If you lift a conservation-preservation, you know what I'm talking about. If you lift that one time, the precedence has been set. I mean, you know how, GL Homes has over 4,000 acres. Let's lift some, you know, conservation-preservation easements for them, too. Please don't open that door. The other thing is, in the Ag Reserve, we don't want any regional uses or regional attractors. Let's take care of the residents who live there. Take care of them, and let's not build these conglomerates that are, you know, oh, let's go out in the Ag Reserve. We always did that. And the other thing is, let's hold tight to the 1.1 million 15,000 square feet of commercial. There's probably 350,000 square feet of that commercial that has not been built yet. Let's let that get built first. You know, it's demand and need and the almighty dollar that orchestrates the needs that come into that area. I know some residents would like restaurants and whatnot. If the need is there, somebody's going to come in and put that need there for the residents. Again, it's always generated by the almighty dollar. The other thing is, I do support more categories for industrial uses. We were slapped with an industrial, a light industrial usage, and on that property, we have over 100 garbage trucks parked west of 441. Could we just come up with some more categories so we don't run into that again? And the last thing that I want to bring up, and the most important, is, well, second to last, we have two traditional marketplaces. There were units that were already approved, residential units, on those marketplaces. They were never built because they were never a moneymaker. Nobody really wanted to live there. When you talk about walkability, you know what? You've got your walkability. Has anybody seen those high risers they're building outside there? Okay? That's your walkability factor. Let's keep it east. Let's understand, in Commissioner Sacks's prayer, she says, let's make a better world for all. The world is not a cookie cutter. If I want to have walkability and high risers and sunfest and everything down the street from me, I will move east. There are reasons that people move towards the west. They're trying to escape it just a little bit. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have Barbara Logan, followed by Paul Owens.
I'm going to cede my time.
Okay. Did you want to cede it to someone specifically, or did you just want to waive your opportunity to speak today?
Opportunity for anyone.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Logan. I think she wanted to waive it in its entirety.
So, Tim, are you going to speak to it? I can't, okay. So we'll just take you.
Hi, my name is Tim Logan. My mom behind me, and son of the late Andy Logan. I want to thank the Commissioners and staff for working with my mother, partners, and me in making yourselves available over the last month. Commissioner Sacks, thank you to you and Vivian for taking time personally to visit our property. It was very special, and thank you for doing that. Shows you care. If folks don't know about that property, it's the corner of Acme Dairy and Pointon Beach Boulevard. It's a big, it's a significant node, right? It's the first exit off the turnpike going west. I had more to say, but I think a lot of it's been said, so I just want to leave you with this. Our family has been in the nursery business since 1977. We've been a consecutive, excuse me, a consistent contributor to the community. We're part of the fabric of the community. My dad owned three parcels of property, two, all three nurseries. The last one is the one on Pointon Beach Boulevard. His intent was always to develop and sell the properties as they matured. That was his business model, so make no mistake about it. The third parcel, he intended to sell. As much as we've been a part of the fabric of the community with the direction it's going, with the population explosion of 15% decade over decade, we think there are things we can do to give back. Commissioner McKinley said, you know, in the May 5 meeting, is there something we can do to help the Logans, given the hardships we've been through? If it's available, we'll take it. But we think we can give back. The community is in need of housing. There's little or no multiple-unit housing in the Ag Reserve. There's a Palm Trans stop in front of the property today that will reduce traffic. The Acme Dairy-Pointon Beach intersection is identified as a major intersection in the August 27, 2020 revision of the Comprehensive Plan, and that is on page 31, Policy 1.5-P. We're asking that you would favor multiple use with an essential housing component accompanied by some commercial and potential community use space. Thanks. That's the ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
We have Paul Owens, followed by Betty Argue. Paul Owens with 1,000 Friends of Florida.
He's out there.
Okay. So Betty Argue.
I know that she's out in the waiting area.
Ms. Smith, just one moment. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I just want to, we were waiting, I just want to say that in visiting the Logan family, it was really a wonderful experience, visit the entire family. And in the letter that he wrote to all of us, if we recall, that he said that his dad's idea was always to farm, to purchase land, farm, and then sell it. And I think that's exactly what he should be doing, and I applaud that, and I applaud their long history with Palm Beach County. And it was just a wonderful thing to see a family in farming for so many years, and now very dedicated to making sure that whoever purchases a land, purchase it with the right idea for the families, because that's such a great spot, and there's going to be a lot of young families around that. So thank you very much to the Logan family for all you've done.
Thank you. And I think most of the Board had an opportunity to meet with at least a representative or member of the family, if not Ms. Logan, individually, and certainly that parcel is one that's on the attention of the members of the Board. Ms. Argue, you're recognized for three minutes, and then we'll go to Ms. Smith.
Hi, I'm Betty Argue. I am the President of Indian Trail Improvement District. Thank you, Commissioners, for having this workshop today. I think it's very important for the county. Excuse me. I'm impressed with what has been accomplished by the county and the Ag Reserve, and I do think that there's a need to balance the uses there as well as in other areas of the county. And as you know, my concern is Indian Trail Improvement District. And so I would like to reiterate Indian Trail's support for the proposal in 2016, 2017 to transfer development rights to preserve land in our area. There is a discussion that has been going on regarding the need for additional water in our area to serve many different purposes, and preserving land in our area will actually help to replenish not only the aquifer but to solve many other potentially regional solutions. So I urge you, when you're moving forward and you're making recommendations, that you consider agricultural lands and other lands outside of just the Ag Reserve, because the same needs exist in our area as well. So I would appreciate your consideration of that. Thank you.
My name's Linda Smith, 17976 Via Rio, Jupiter, Florida. As a registered architect and a lead accredited professional, I know the negative effects created by our buildings and our development. Responsible design includes trying to reduce your impact. Doctors have the oath, do no harm. Another common saying is, the simplest answer is often the best, and I'll get back to that. Please build where the infrastructure already is. Millennials want to live in urban centers. Again, West Palm Beach was pointed out. They want to live where the coffee shops and restaurants already are. Ask those owners if they want more existing customers from their area, or do they want more competition from other areas out west or new stores and restaurants? Unincorporated Palm Beach County should be focusing development in the existing and developed areas. It does no one any good who needs affordable or workforce housing to locate them an hour away from the urban centers, from their work, from their retail, from their schools, or in fact, hours on a mass transit system. They also do not need to be located near pesticides and fertilizers and dust and noise and the things that go on with farming that's natural and needs to continue. I understand some folks who own Ag land no longer want to farm. My sister and brother-in-law farmed an organic farm in Western Pennsylvania for 15 years, and they sold it to another farmer. I understand the county makes money leasing our land to their farmers. Good for you. Keep up the good work. So what can the Commissioners do? You can hold to your existing Comprehensive Plan. Again, maybe the simplest answer is the simplest answer, and in the best answer, but if you do do that, you need to protect it from this death of 1,000 cuts. It is still the death of the agricultural Preserve. You can protect our local and national food source. Our food goes all around the country. You can protect our diverse economy, our diverse job base. You can keep the existing residential cap on the Ag Reserve. Do not allow variances and exemptions. No development west of 441. Possibly you can buy the development rights from these farmers that no longer want to farm. I think you should do a cost-benefit analysis, and I hope it doesn't cost too much money, but when you do that cost-benefit analysis, please consider the benefit to the county as a whole, not to individual owners or developers. Thank you for your time, and Paul Owens is here now, if you could call him.
Thank you so much for your comments.
So we're going to have Paul Owens, followed by Lisa Interlandi, followed by Dr. Lori Vinicor.
Vinicor.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity and apologize for the ill-timed restroom break. I'm the president of One Thousand Friends of Florida. Since 1986, we've been Florida's leading nonprofit advocates of growth management, and the fundamentals of growth management are simple: directing new development toward urban areas with the infrastructure to handle it, and steering development away from agricultural and natural land to preserve their economic and environmental benefits. I'm here because One Thousand Friends has numerous members in Palm Beach County, and we've been promoting our priorities, planning and conservation, in the county for decades. Those priorities include helping to plan the agricultural reserve and defend it from incompatible development. We see the ag reserve as a critical resource for the entire state, not just the county, for agricultural production, which is important to our state's economy and way of life, and for the considerable environmental benefits, including aquifer recharge, natural water quality improvements, carbon sequestration, wildlife habitat, and flood control. Every exception from the principles of the ag reserve threatens these benefits, and we do struggle to see how lowering the standard for approval of residential development or allowing industrial development fulfills the vision created for the ag reserve. We do appreciate the need for affordable housing in Palm Beach County. One Thousand Friends led the effort that persuaded legislators to pass the Sodowsky Act in 1992. We don't take a backseat to anybody on advocacy for affordable housing. We also understand the need to create more job opportunities throughout our state, but there must be more appropriate locations to pursue these worthy objectives than an area that is explicitly dedicated under the county comp plan to maintain farming and conservation land. Three years ago, with the University of Florida, we did an analysis of the impact of the projected population increase over the next 50 years in Palm Beach County on land use and water demand. And that analysis showed that with smart growth policies, the county can accommodate that population growth and still preserve more than 200,000 acres of agricultural and natural lands. We urge county leaders to stick with the comp plan and preserve the reserve. We have submitted longer comments in writing and commend them to your consideration. I'm grateful for your attention today.
We have Lisa Interlandi, followed by Dr. Lori Vinicor.
I don't see her here. Oh, she left?
You're recognized, Dr. Vinicor. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Administrator Baker. I'm Lori Vinicor. I live at 10626 La Reina Road, Delray Beach, Florida. I'm a farmer in the agriculture reserve. I train horses, and I grow exotic fruits. It was absolutely appropriate this morning that it began all with Dr. Ron Rice. It was so great to hear your presentation. I graduated Rutgers with a degree in zoology, and I practiced medicine throughout the 80s. But since the early 90s, we've been farming here in Delray Beach. I've been passionately involved with the ag reserve. My husband and I used to collect Malaluka honey at the canal banks in the ag reserve. We would have tons and tons of beehives there, and we'd collect the Malaluka honey in the wintertime. We would ride our horses over to Peanuts when it was at the corner of 441 and Atlantic. It has since moved east. We would purchase our bait and then go fishing with it. When citrus canker and Huanlongbing, which is citrus green, came to south Florida, there was a need to look for other fruits to grow, and there are so many other great fruits you can grow, as you can see in my Florida Fruit Safari book that I published. Back in 2011 and 2012, I served on the Eldrab Subcommittee for Produce Stand and Related Uses, which helped to make Bednar's Farm Market, the wonderful agri-tourism destination it is today. I shopped there every week, and also, I even shop in, at the Bednar's Farm Market in Delray Beach when I ride my bikes on Saturday. Back in 2014 and 2015, I served as one of the 19 members of the Agriculture Reserve Roundtable Discussions. As a result, changes were made to assist the farmer and correct some perceived flaws in the commercial aspect of the plan. With all of the advanced horticulture courses I've taken in my time as president of the Palm Beach County Rare Fruit Council, my passion for ecology, too, I was inspired to write those books you have there, the one on the conservation as well. Throughout the years, working on the comprehensive plan while serving on the Planning Commission and subsequent ULDC amendments on Eldrab, all regarding the agriculture reserve, I am in awe of how staff have interpreted the comprehensive plan and maintained the intent of the master plan of the ag reserve. I am looking forward to the next few months to observe the direction and any future amendments which might be made with this, what appears to be an ambitious project. I'm here to offer my assistance in any way.
Thank you, Dr. Vinicor. Commissioner Sax, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vinicor. Do you have an announcement about your position with the alliance? Would you like to say it at this time?
Well, I am now president of the Alliance of Delray Residential Associations. After 25 years that Bob Schilbaum was president, I am now president.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you.
We are, I think, united in our belief and appreciation of the many civic organizations and community organizations in our county. The Alliance COBRO, just two examples, and the way they help guide growth management and public policy issues in this county as a whole. So, thank you for your service, doctor.
We have Ann Gannon, followed by Neil Schiller, followed by James Chard.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Gannon. I'm the Palm Beach County Tax Collector, and I'm not here to support or say no. That's not my role in this. But I am here to make you understand that for every house you build, 2.4 people come in my office. And let me explain to you what that means in real life. In our central office, our next road test is February 4. And in our Delray, our central DL, the next available appointment is November 19. And all the other service centers, except PGA, our next road test is January 14. In South County, our next road test is February 1 of next year. Those are people that call in our office and need an appointment, and from this date to the last February 1, it's full. So, every time you make a change and add housing, there is no recognition in this plan, nor were we talked to about how it affects our office. So, I'm going to suggest to all of you that we need to get involved in this, because it not only affects my office, it affects every one of your constituents. And let me tell you, when they get angry and can't get in my office, they call you first, as you know, Maria, and then they go up the line. So, be very careful of how you plan this out, because there has to be plans for our offices out there, as I'm sure the supervisor of elections office is out there. The sheriff has his own road show going, so I don't have to get involved in that. He takes care of himself. But I'm just telling you that there really, from the staff here who did an excellent presentation, there's no recognition of how the services we provide affect your constituents. So, that's my, that's, those are the only comments I have. And as I said, for every house you build, it's 2.4 people that come in my office for services. And those 2.4 people, particularly the ones moving here from other states, sometimes they're really not pleasant, as you know. And I don't blame them, frankly. I would be mad, because the state law says in 30 days, if you move here, you get a driver's license. Well, if you can't get in my office, how do you get that driver's license? So, be cognizant of what's going on in our offices and provide some way for us to get involved in this process. And that's all I have to say, is to make you go home and wake up at 2 o'clock in the morning and think about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Tax Collector. Commissioner Sax, you're recognized, and Commissioner McKinley.
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute, Ms. Gannon. Come on back. 2.4, you know, we're having hundreds of thousands of people moving into Palm Beach County, regardless of what we do today. So, do you need an office in the ag reserve?
Well, we actually do need 3.5 acres out there.
Okay. Well, we discuss infrastructure.
Okay.
We discuss firefighters and law enforcement, and I was remiss in not discussing tax collectors. So, so, let's talk.
Everyone loves their tax collector.
Let's all talk, because if you need an office out, and I haven't checked my driver's license, but I want to make sure that...
Verdacious. We have great service. You can attest to that.
Good. I know. I know. So, let's discuss, because when we talk about infrastructure, we do have to talk about your office as well.
Yeah, we will. We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley.
Yeah, Ann, I just had a question for you.
Sure.
On the privately held preserved lands, do you collect property taxes on those?
To my knowledge, we do, yes.
Okay. And do you know what they're taxed as? Are they taxed as conservation lands?
You could give me a P I N number, I could, or P C N number. I could look it up for you.
Okay. I was just curious.
And run some of those.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll actually go upstairs and see if we can email you something. Any other questions?
Not at this time. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We have Neil Schiller, followed by James Chard, followed by Gabriel Bove.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, Honorary County Commissioner, Ms. Baker. My name is Neil Schiller. My address is 17960 Villa Clubway in Boca Raton. I usually come up here to speak on behalf of a client, but today, I'm truly honored to represent myself and my family. You see, I'm a 12-year resident of the ag reserve. I'm 45 years old. I have a wife of 21 years. I have two children, 17 and 14, that we've raised our family, for the most part, in the ag reserve. I can remember when we moved to the ag reserve, because we moved from central Boca Raton, and the argument in the household at the time was, "I don't want to spend more time in my car. I like our location where I am," said my wife. I wanted to be a little bit more suburban. I wanted to live in the suburbs where I grew up in Maryland, and I wanted to give my kids that opportunity without the traffic and without the noise. And I know Commissioner Sax lives right around the corner from me, so I know you can appreciate that. But we moved anyway, and we moved thinking that out in west Boca, or west Delray on 441, in the ag reserve, that life would be a little bit more slower. But as the years have gone on and on and on, there have been more houses built and more people have come, and I have more friends now living in the ag reserve. And when I told them about this meeting today, they all said that they wanted a myriad of different things. But I think the, one of the true things, if I want to really consolidate it down and not take too much time, is they want some more options, and they want some more services. They don't want to be stuck in their car, driving east on Clintmore, east on Yamato, or Glades, or Atlantic, or Boynton, to get to those services that they use, whether it be a doctor's office, whether it be a business office, whether it be their office. You look around, especially in the ag reserve today, everything is jam-packed. The roads are packed. The stores are packed. The restaurants are packed. Now, granted, some of this has to do with supply chain issues, some of this has to do with employment-related issues, but there is a level of populism now in the ag reserve that didn't exist before, and because of the property values and the hot real estate market here, it's getting worse. And so, while you're undergoing this task of looking at the ag reserve, I would just like you to remember two things. There are young people that live in the ag reserve, and thank you so much, Maria Sax, for calling me a millennial. It made my day. But second, that these millennials, these young families that now live in the ag reserve want services that are somewhat close to them. And if you can make that happen for our community and our generation, I would so appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Baker, my name is Jim Chard. I live at 401 Southeast 4th Avenue, and I have the honor and the pleasure to have worked with and known many of you up there on the dais, done a little campaigning together once in a while, and I am, as I say, pleased to be here today. I also have been involved with many different county activities, whether it's the Congress Avenue Task Force, or the Admin Center, or TPA grants, and a little bit on the ag reserve. I've been following the activities in the ag reserve for about 10 years now. And I come to this, as Commissioner Sax mentioned, as Vice Mayor and Commissioner of Delray Beach, and I also have a master's in urban planning, so this is certainly one of my areas and passions. What I'd like to do is give you about 10 points of what I believe could constitute an integrated vision of what a 21st century ag reserve could be. And was pointed out earlier today, it would be a very different ag reserve than was existing back when the master plan was done. Farmers didn't use drones then. They didn't use autonomous tractors. It's a whole different world now, 20 years, 25 years after that plan. And I think what we can all agree on is, as an objective, is, one, to preserve the agricultural character of the area. That's what defines it. That's what's unique. That's what's unique in all of Florida and all of the U.S. And at the same time, manage to come up with a middle ground between all the competing interests. So, I would like to briefly tell you my thoughts on 10 points. First of all, mixed use is absolutely critical. I think that's how we get closer together. That's how we have fewer automobiles. That's how we have affordability, and that's how we have a positive environment that we can maintain, that was, that we inherited from our forefathers. We also should promote a live-work-play environment. We shouldn't have to always get in our car and drive 10 miles to get a loaf of bread or go to a doctor's office. A lot of that should be around us, and you, through your planning and zoning, can make sure that that happens. We should also gear this toward young families, and I obviously am not in that demographic, but I think we want this to be young people who bring jobs and skills and come to Florida and the ag reserve as a place to live. We also need to really protect this environment. We need to have, when we build the houses, when we design the houses, when we design the business, when we do a new kind of agriculture that's around ag tech, we need to preserve the environment. And we can do that with things like trees and good planning and walkability.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
All right. You all have the letter, and thank you very much for receiving.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We have Gabriel Bove, followed by Cece Fazio, followed by Andrew Sewell.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Gabe Bove. I'm a real estate developer from Ponte Vedra, Florida. I currently have the Tahary piece of property under contract on Atlantic Avenue. It's 40 acres. We also have, coupled with that, another 20 acres, so our total site area is 60 acres. So, how did I come to the Palm Beaches, and how did all this kind of begin? My associate at my office, Emily Stouffer, has a niece that was working in Marketplace and was telling Emily she couldn't find a place to live. We began to look at this area, and we noticed Marketplace and all the land around it, and we couldn't find any apartment communities. Why is that? Very odd. So, we began to drill down. One thing led to the next, and 18 months ago, we were able to put a piece of, this piece of property under contract, and we began to go down this path to explore, how do we complete a mixed-use component? You had the commercial. You had some jobs around it, but there was no place for people to live where they worked. So, as we began to explore and study, we learned more and more about the preserved area and the requirements and how this all came about. And it's been a wonderful walk. I've enjoyed the relationship... I've enjoyed the relationships with the Commissioners, with the Alliance, and trying to come up with a win-win solution that works for everybody, that completes the Ag Reserve. We're not here to overhaul the Ag Reserve. We're just here to complete it. The master plan called for 2,500 multifamily homes, and today, there's maybe 40 homes that are for the farm workers. And where's the rest? Where's the help that's needed for affordable housing? Where's the help that's needed for the young millennial, the young persons? Where's the help for the seniors that want to be close to their families and can't afford to live in the Ag Reserve? There's also 23,000 jobs in the Ag Reserve to sustain the homes that are there. Some of those people, yes, are working remotely and have other jobs. Some are more working from home, but there are services that are required for those homes and people that live there. You need the firefighter. You need the teacher. You need the shopkeeper worker. You need the medical tech. All of those services are needed in a community. So again, we're here as a developer to be responsible, to do development correctly, and in my view, try to make it win-win. We fully respect the preserve requirements and the preservation. Of our 60 acres, we're taking 36 and dedicating those to preservation. We believe in preservation. We know that's the backbone of this area, and we want to respect that. So we're trying to, again, do things in a win-win fashion. So what do we need? We just need some help on the density. We need eight units per acre, maximum. We think our site is ideally located. It's on a major thoroughfare. It's across the street from a now medical clinic that's coming, and down the street from Marketplace. Bicycle away from schools, and walking distance to shops.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired, unfortunately. We appreciate your comments.
We have Cece Fazio, followed by Andrew Sewell, followed by Lois Sewell.
Hello. My name is Cece Fazio, and I'm representing the Durrell family. We are part owners of the Logan property you just heard Tim speak about on Acme Dairy Road. First, I just wanted to thank all the Commissioners who met with one of the three partners over the last couple of weeks. Really appreciate that. Hopefully, you all understand the position we're in now. We're just trying to maintain a viable agricultural operation in this area where demographic changes have made it possible. We've all talked about that. If you don't know where it is, when you drive west on Boynton Beach Boulevard, cross the turnpike, the very first traffic light, our farms on the left, across the street, is Tim Linkus's farm. And they look out of place. It looks like development just passed it by, because it has. It moved west and kind of jumped over us, and we're still there. My dad was one of the original investors with Andy Logan and John Vargas, and they started out as friends, and then they became partners and bought this property in 1989 with the intent to develop it eventually. They survived freezes, a hurricane, high interest rates. They refinanced their loan multiple times, just to keep from losing everything. But the biggest challenge was the uncertainty of what it meant to be swept into the Ag Reserve tier in '99, and what that did to the value of their investment. These three friends who started it, they've all passed away, and Barbara Logan is now the only surviving spouse. And my generation's inherited this uncertainty, and trying to understand what's going to happen to our family's investment. We're not farmers. We have trouble finding anyone to even lease the parcel, but we have to do that to maintain the agricultural designation for the property taxes that we pay every year, and they go up every year. But it's impractical to expect someone to farm this small piece that's right there, so we're just hanging on. I'm hopeful, and so are the other longtime landowners, that we can get some certainty out of today's workshop. We're perfectly positioned for the new urbanism that Commissioner Sax talks about. And we could solve some of the workforce housing demand, and we could solve some of the amenities demand that we keep hearing about. We could have a deli, a pickleball court, a nail salon, bring it on. I'm just asking, let's please just work together and help find a solution that we can all live with. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have Andrew Sewell, followed by Lois Sewell, followed by Heidi Jewell.
Hi. I'm Andy Sewell, and I am one of the owners of LAS Harms, and I just wanted to thank the Commission for having this workshop to look at new ideas for the Ag Reserve. My wife and myself own a very small insignificant piece of property. It's about 6.9 acres. And I just wanted to let you know, ever since the state have taken the widening of State Road 441, it's become economical and feasible to continue to farm that property. I could give you the quick math or the long math, but at the end of the day, as a property owner, I make less than minimum wage on my property, the way it's set up now, for paying my people a working, living wage, which is important. You have to take care of people. So, at the end of the day, I might maybe make $14,000 a year on my property. So I just would like for you to keep that in mind, that it's economically unfeasible. My property will also never affect, adversely affect traffic flow, because we are right on 441. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sax, you're recognized.
Yes, very quick. Mr. Sewell, could you tell the Commission what, and I haven't, I don't know you, but I knew your sister.
Yeah.
But could you tell the Commission what nursery your family had many, many years ago?
Oh, my family had a very well-known nursery. It's called East Marsh Nursery. I'm actually a third-generation farmer, and a second-generation Floridian. So, I've been in the business all my life. I grew up in this business. I know this business back and forward. I know what it could produce and what it can't produce. And you just look at it from a common sense practice, and it just doesn't make economic feasible sense.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Lois Sewell, Andy's wife, from 9437 State Road 7, Boynton Beach Boulevard. Thank you for holding this workshop, and listening to so much information and many comments. As a property owner and businessperson in the community, I am in touch and speak often with many business owners in the Reserve and Palm Beach County. Small business owners, from landscapers, plumbers, mechanics, to veterinarians, and many more, were hurt by the pandemic, coupled with the lack of space in which to run their businesses. I'm constantly asked to reach out to people that I know and that Andy knows, who have property on State Road 7, and Boynton Beach Boulevard, and Atlantic Avenue, and Lyons Road, who might have interest in selling or renting to them. We need space for businesses to operate, and I encourage industrial-use zoning in these areas. Business owners don't know what to do or where to go. So, thank you very much. And also, I just wanted to know, will you guys be reading the comments that were cards for people that couldn't come today?
If they have comments on them, or they're online submitted cards, we do have them, and we do read them.
Okay. Thank you. There were just so many people that wanted to come, and because they weren't, they can't come.
We have them, but we have about 60 of them, so...
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Heidi Jewell, and I had the privilege and pleasure of being the Assistant County Attorney, assigned to the Environmental Resources Management Department during the environmentally sensitive lands and Ag Reserve acquisition programs. I am proud to have been a small part of these remarkable projects. The Ag Reserve program was part of the second bond issue, approved overwhelmingly by Palm Beach County voters to keep ag lands in agriculture and open space in perpetuity. As the program developed, we grew concerned about the possibility of a future commission overturning that will of the voters by targeting the conservation lands for development. Would the will of the voters be sustained in the future, after the bonds were retired and the associated restrictions ended? That a future commission might overturn the will of the people who voted overwhelmingly to keep certain lands in the Ag Reserve forever as open space was a legitimate concern, as proven by this workshop. Based on today's presentation, it appears that the intended preservation under the Ag Reserve referendum and approved master plan has been somewhat chipped away at, to the detriment of the area and the county as a whole. Please do not sacrifice the Ag Reserve by bowing to developer pressure or the lure of revenue. I do recognize that we have important needs. Affordable housing is a very important one. Perhaps the Ag Reserve is not the place for it. Please maintain the land uses and ratios in the Ag Reserve as intended under the bond issue and as mandated by the comp plan. I'm confident that if put to a citizen vote today, the Ag Reserve Conservation Referendum would again pass overwhelmingly. Yes, things have changed since the bond referendum, but given the extensive development that has occurred in the county in the last 20 years, the conservation goals in the Ag Reserve are even more critical. Countywide, there is less and less to preserve every day. There has been ample development in Palm Beach County over the past 20 years, the necessity of which is debatable. And as we heard earlier, more development in the Ag Reserve will require more county services, facilities, and infrastructure, further magnifying destructive impacts and abandonment of conservation goals. More concrete and the attendant impacts of development will only worsen already degraded air and water quality. Destroying more open space will further impede our efforts to fight the devastating impacts of climate change. Do the right thing and defend the Ag Reserve to maximize agriculture, conservation, and open space. Let's stop seeing land as worthless unless it's being used or improved. Maybe there's value in land, just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jewell. Thank you for your service as well to the county during that time period and during your time period as Assistant County Attorney. Your comments, I assume, were reduced to writing in some format?
Yes.
Is there any way I could get a copy of them?
Yes, I'd be happy. And thank you for saying that. It was a pleasure.
Absolutely.
We have Joe O'Donnell, followed by Mr. Drew Martin, followed by Paula Mora.
Long day. I'd like to read part of a letter that I sent to the Commission yesterday. "My name's Joe O'Donnell, Starkey Road. First, I'd like to thank all the Commissioners for taking time to visit the five ag businesses on Starkey Road. We hope that you've now had an appreciation for the vibrant ag businesses in the Ag Reserve. The successful operations you visited have no interest in selling. As you saw firsthand, the false narrative that agriculture is dead in the Ag Reserve is simply not true. We are dependent upon you to take the lead in protecting and promoting agriculture businesses in the Ag Reserve. In the last eight years, county government has done little to nothing to support agriculture or to enhance farmland values within the Ag Reserve. At the same time, developers have prospered, as the county has approved continued development with no regard for the impact on existing businesses. How can the county help support agriculture? A rural parkway. In 2014, when Lyons Road Extension cut through the middle of the Ag Reserve, the county committed to including a rural parkway. This did not happen. Another Lyons expansion is currently being planned. There is no rural parkway included. Additionally, there's no allowance for farm vehicles. A rural parkway would provide bike and walking paths, horse trails, all of which enhance lifestyle and land values. Properly designed, it would also include farm equipment. This would improve everyone's safety. Predictability. It's important the county enforce the rules and regulations in the comprehensive plan. We bought land in the Ag Reserve and created Irish Acres, believing we would be protected in the language of the plan. The county has not lived up to its commitment. Potential new investors and agriculture businesses will not make commitments until they have confidence in what the long-range rules and regulations will be. As you all know, business needs predictability. The county has made no effort to attract agriculture businesses into the Ag Reserve. Increase the value of land, the five-acre plots, by allowing one residence to be built on those plots, regardless if it sold its development rights. Use Wellington as the template. Require developers to work with existing businesses to ensure that they're not negatively impacting existing businesses.
Mr. O'Donnell, your time has expired, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see any questions at this time.
We have Mr. Drew Martin, followed by Paula Mora, followed by Danielle Hartman.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Locks H2 Group CR Club. We also submitted our, our lawyer has submitted a letter as well, and we'll be speaking later. Heidi Mahaffey from Robert Hartzell Law Firm. I really think that the way we're approaching this, I appreciate staff, but we really keep acting like, you know, agriculture is kind of in the past, even though the reality is, I don't think anybody up there stopped eating, I don't think anybody stopped eating vegetables and fruits, which are the very things that are produced there. And we ignore the value that the Agriculture Reserve brings to our economy, and we can't be an economy that's just dependent on development. That's the real weakness of Florida. We always see the economic driver for this state as just bringing people in here, building them houses, and we really don't have a sustainable economy, because we want to get rid of everything else. Now, I was disappointed to hear the gentleman say, "I moved there to get a suburban lifestyle," and then say, "But now everybody there wants more services, but they want less traffic." But the reality is, the sign says the Ag Reserve. And when people move there, they have to expect that they're moving into an area that is agricultural. They're not going to get the same level of service. I think as Karen Marcus said, the former Commissioner, that's why you move east. If you want to have a high level of service, you can live right here in downtown West Palm, and you can get all the service you want. But if you move to the Ag Reserve, you make a sacrifice. You say, "I'm willing to give up some of those services to live in an area that's less congested, more open space." Now, we didn't really talk at all about climate change. We haven't really talked about the benefits of carbon sequestration. What's the value of keeping land undeveloped, of leaving land open? We could get a lot more cypress trees out there and reduce the heat impact coming from climate change. We could absorb land that could absorb floodwaters, can send water into our aquifers. These are all values that we are ignoring and only looking at development as the only solution. We're really asking that you not change the rules. Leave this as it is. If GL Homes would like to sacrifice some of their housing units for affordable housing, we encourage them to give those up and donate those to the county, and I'd be happy to pat them on the back when they do that.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
We have Paula Mora, followed by Danielle Hartman, followed by Roger Fina.
Good afternoon, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this issue. My name is Paula Mora, and I live at 7057 43rd Trail Northwest Palm Beach. I've been a resident of Palm Beach County for over 35 years. Today, you were discussing a really important issue. I appreciate your willingness to have vision and be forward-thinking in your approach. I appreciate your willingness to have vision and be forward-thinking in your approach. Change is inevitable, but how we manage that change and growth is important to our county's success. We cannot continue to say no to everything. We have to look for solutions. Today, Palm Beach County has established key priorities that are important to the long-term viability and success of our county. These priorities focus on housing needs, land preservation for agriculture, and ensuring clean, safe water resources. These issues have come up in discussion about the ag reserve. We have to start looking at these issues on a countywide basis and not solely in a particular area. The issues facing our county are too big, and the opportunities before us are too important to not have a regional focus to solving them. The ag reserve has allowed development for years in exchange for preservation, but that preservation and development has been limited to the ag reserve only. We need to change this approach. We should be expanding our view to determine how projects we approve in the ag reserve can benefit us countywide. If a project is developed in the ag reserve, can we then preserve land or water resources in other parts of the county? Why limit preservation for development in the ag reserve only? It's no longer necessary to limit this opportunity to just the ag reserve, but instead, look at how the framework, which made the ag reserve a success, can be mimicked countywide so our entire community can benefit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Danielle Hartman, and I'm here representing Ruth and Norman Relles Jewish Family Services. We have four locations located all in South Palm Beach County. I'll give you the address of the one closest to the ag reserve, which is 7091 West Atlantic Avenue. So much has been said today, and I've really enjoyed sitting here all day and hearing. One thing, and I think Commissioner Sacks said it way hours ago, was there's got to be a balance, right? You've heard farmers that don't want to farm anymore, but the farmers that do, let them farm. The horse riders, let them ride horses. The people that want to live and work where they, want to live where they work, let them do that, too. I feel like there's got to be a balance. Why does it have to be all or nothing? It doesn't, and it shouldn't be. We heard a lot about workforce housing. It was Commissioner Moreno. You asked specifically a question about where's workforce housing in the presentation that was excellent by the department earlier today. I'm here representing the seniors who have lived in South Palm Beach County near the ag reserve for years and years and years, and when I hear someone say, "Well, maybe affordable housing shouldn't be in the ag reserve," it just makes me so sad because there are so many older adults that live right there, and maybe they had a spouse that died, and they don't have an income anymore, and so they're being forced to move out of the community that they've lived in their entire lives. For what? Because we can't solve a problem? In the master plan, it did make provisions for affordable housing. We just haven't gotten there, right? So I want you all, because I didn't really hear anybody else talk about seniors, I don't want you to forget sight of the seniors that have contributed to our communities, that have raised their children. Our agency, which serves over 15,000 residents in Boca Raton and Delray Beach each year, I can't tell you the number of grandparents that are coming to us now, raising their grandchildren. Why do they have to leave where their grandkids go to school? Because someone decides that they should not be living in the ag reserve because we shouldn't have affordable housing in the ag reserve? We need projects. We're a part, we're, we're very supportive of the reserve at Atlantic and other projects like that, and I urge you to also be supportive. Look, when we do strategic planning at my agency, we don't do it for 20 years. Now we do it for three. And I do believe 20 years ago, when that master plan was written, it was written, but no one expected it to be a plan for 20 years. So while I have heard and respect everybody's opinion who has spoken today, I do believe it's time to change the plan, and I do believe it's time to include more affordable housing, workforce housing, senior housing, whatever you want to call it. But I don't think it's fair to ask people who have lived their entire lives in Boca Raton and Delray Beach to move because we can't figure out why and how to get them to stay. So thank you.
Ma'am, just a very brief question. You referred on a couple occasions to us asking or making people move out of the ag reserve that were seniors in particular. What is it that you're referring to?
So it used to be in Delray Beach that Kings Point and Century Village in Boca Raton were considered affordable housing options for older adults. Now that is no longer affordable housing, so they are forced to move out of South Palm Beach County, out of the area. But if there were projects like the reserve at Atlantic and other projects that bring affordable housing into that community, they only have to just move down the street because they can't afford to stay in Kings Point anymore. That's what I'm referring to.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We have Roger Fina, followed by Nancy Channan, followed by Matt Gitkin.
Is Roger here? I guess not. Okay. Should I go ahead? Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Commissioners and staff. My name is Nancy Channan. I live at 200 Northeast Second Avenue in Delray Beach, and I've lived in the area since the 90s. I'm just going to echo what somebody said a few comments ago. The agricultural reserve has served as an important, has served an important role in our county in preserving land and our environment while keeping density low on development projects. But as suggested, the plan has worked for a while, but it is important that we adapt with the times. I also believe, as was said earlier, it is critical that we look beyond the ag reserve as our community continues to grow. We need to look at key priorities such as land preservation, workforce housing, and water resource management. We also need to look at these issues on a county and regional basis, not just in one particular area. As we heard earlier today, the ag reserve, though critical, is but a portion of the county's substantial agricultural land. While our discussion today is on the ag reserve, I hope you will consider, as part of this discussion, how we can take the benefits on what we've decided to do with the ag reserve and apply that countywide. Let's not limit ourselves to just the ag reserve when we are talking about development rights and county priorities. The ag reserve can no longer serve as the only geographic area where we look to preserve land and to protect our environment. We need to think more regionally when discussing and looking at potential projects and opportunities. Thank you so much.
I'm going to call Roger Fina one more time. Matt Gitkin, followed by Emmy Wilks. Matt Gitkin, followed by Emmy Wilks, followed by Heidi Mahaffey, McCaffey.
She's at the atrium.
Okay. Kay Gates.
If you've heard your name called, please feel free to come to the microphone and just state your name for the record so we can take the card out.
Good afternoon. Heidi Mahaffey. I'm here representing 1,000 Friends of Florida, as well as the Locksahatchee Group of the Sierra Club. Both of these members, all of these members advocate for the preservation of agricultural lands and open space that provide a much-needed buffer for the environment of vitality, not only of the agricultural reserve, but of the county as a whole. This commission has a very unique opportunity and obligation to preserve a vast majority of the remaining natural areas and open spaces in the tri-counties. This county has always had the foresight to protect the county's resources for ecological, economic reasons for today, as well as to protect the environmentally sensitive lands for future generations to come. It's important to know that small land changes may seem insignificant to fix immediate problems, but they can have disastrous effects and the cumulative impact later on that can alter the very landscape of the agricultural reserve. We are asking this county to stick with the plan, and that doesn't mean to do nothing, but to look at what the comprehensive plan has in and of itself today to help resolve some of these issues. Looking at Objective 1.5, it states to enhance and preserve agricultural activity, environmental and water resources, and open land, which means if there is a decline in farming or the desire to farm, it doesn't mean that those lands should then be converted to development because they still have very important environmental benefits. Commissioner McKinley was asking, "Well, what are the, what are the benefits of open space if we're not allowed to have residents go into this or have any kind of ecotourism?" Well, I say to you and to the rest of the commission that there is very important environmental benefits that give a net gain to the community as a whole, such as buffering impacts to water quality, improving flood control, providing carbon sequestration, reducing air pollution, mitigating climate change, and giving a place for wildlife habitat, and a very important buffer to the Locksahatchee National Wildlife Reserve, which gives the county over 100 jobs and $2 million in sales tax. It is the only northern Everglades remaining. So to that point, in looking at the plan, what we ask this county to do is, this commission to do, is to cap the density and stick to that cap. We cannot continue to carve out exceptions and expand the density because where is it going to end? It's going to end with there not being any form of the agricultural reserve in and of itself at all. We ask that there not be any development west of State Road 7, US 441, to protect the Locksahatchee Wildlife Reserve, to preserve more green space, parks with equestrian trails, wetland restoration. The preserve should truly be environmental and not the implication of public services. A hospital on a preserved land is not going to have the same environmental benefit as a wetland and open space. Encourage more agricultural neighborhood developments, such as Arden. Incorporate that into these developments to have a balance between agricultural use and the residential.
Thank you, ma'am. Unfortunately, your time has expired. We do may have a question for you, Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you.
Actually, I don't have a question, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Please recognize that my comment wasn't a lack of understanding that conservation and green space hold a public purpose in terms of environmental stewardship. I think I have hiked through four national parks in California, did Glacier last year, did Sedona in December. I oftentimes will stop by the springs and hike trails in Florida, have taken advantage of a lot of the ecotourism opportunities here in Palm Beach County, and I just believe that if we've got this land in public ownership, that in addition to having the green space and having the trees and the environmentally sensitive lands, that somehow the public should also have a recreational benefit to those. I met with DOT, and they were talking to me, and the Transportation Planning Agency, and they were talking about the State Road 7 corridor, and they talk about Okeechobee, and they talk about connecting trail systems and beautifying things, and I just believe that utilizing that space that's already in public ownership for a multitude of passive recreational purposes is an environmental, or a public benefit, and that was the context of my question. But I certainly recognize that having trees over pavement is a public benefit as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I did submit a letter, and I have copies that I'll hand to staff if anyone needs a copy as well. It gives it to more details.
Very good. We would appreciate that. Thank you so much for your comments.
We have Kay Gates, followed by David Shulson, followed by Brett Jelsomino, followed by Antonia Freenot.
Kay Gates, 14150, Nussing Way, Delray Beach. I have recently moved there. I do want to share with the commission that I've been a resident of the county for going on 22 years. I had no problem downsizing, selling my lovely home for an exorbitant amount of money and moving into High Point West 3. There are plenty, plenty of senior housing. I couldn't believe the amount of senior housings I had to select from when I went to purchase to downsize and purchase something else. Stick with the agricultural reserve comprehensive plan. Palm Beach County has a well-earned reputation for enhancing the environment, health, and well-being of our residents. The county has earned awards for avant-garde projects. Stick with the plan. Taxpayers, 100 million-plus investment in farming in an ideal location must be protected, sustained, and expanded upon. Egregious mistakes have been made. The ag reserve is at a tipping point. Please don't make more mistakes. Increasing non-farm-related development and density chips away at the plan, perpetuates the domino effect. It is death by a thousand cuts. I'm going to show, share some more personal things. I've been at this conservation effort for more than 20 years. Current Commissioners, you weren't here when the plan was envisioned. I appreciate your taking the time to look at the history of the ag reserve and the plan. My husband and I moved here from up north the fall of 98. We were first-time voters in this county November 1999. We were surprised with the land conservation bond on the ballot. Of course, we voted to tax ourselves so that local farming and green space would be preserved and supported near where we lived, as did over 72% of the voters. We attended classes at FAU's Continuing Education Programs. We learned about Florida environment, the native flora and fauna. We participated in some of the programs sponsored by Stan Bronson's Earth Foundation and the South Florida Water Management. We learned about water here, about porous limestone, about the Floridian aquifer. Our preserved land has many benefits besides farming. Flood control with aquifer recharge, wetlands for wildlife, a buffer for the Arthur R. Marshall Locksahatchee National Wildlife Refuge. Now is the time for the county to purchase more land or development rights to retain farming. Florida forever is funded again. This is an opportunity for matching funds. I implore Commissioners to direct your staff to work on this, as opposed to how to give away what was worked so hard to achieve.
Thank you, Kay. Your time has expired, unfortunately. We do appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
We have David Shulson, followed by Brett Jelsomino, followed by Antonia Freenot, followed by Tim Linkus.
Kay, you have to leave.
Who? David? Okay.
All right. Good afternoon. Brett Jelsomino, 4200 Southwest 131st. First of all, thank you, staff and commission, for your service and for hosting this special opportunity to discuss the future of a special part of Palm Beach County. I was born and raised in Palm Beach County. In fact, grew up on ag land, and I'm an Eagle Scout. I only mention that because, in my view, I consider myself a bit of a conservationist. I enjoy nature. I enjoy the outdoors, and I grew up out here. I'm also a real estate developer, and I appreciate the managed growth, smart growth. As a member of ULI, I subscribe to, you know, both suburban development and urban development, and there's a need and a want for all. I am here specifically advocating for consideration for more inclusive housing in the agricultural reserve. Somebody mentioned before me, this was a consideration and an allocation within the original plan to have a certain number of multi-housing units within the agricultural reserve, and those haven't yet been delivered, and I now understand that there are some financial or physical hurdles that are a little bit prohibitive as to why, whether it's the need for 400 acres to develop 400 units or, or other reasons. But what I am advocating for is certainly not an overhaul, or a deletion, or a disrespect of any of the current provisions that are in the ag reserve. In fact, I hope to contribute to preservation, right? If we develop one acre, we preserve one and a half acres under the 60/40 ratio. So in fact, the, of the 12,000 acres that are currently in preservation of the 22 or 24, the 50, 60% preservation, that number would grow by allowing additional development. But more specifically, it would address a civic need for attainable housing. I have never seen growth like this before in my, in my career, and it's, it's a little bit startling. I couldn't afford to buy another house in South Florida if I had to buy one today. I'm fortunate that I own an asset and I, I'm not a renter, but I am also witness to the- But I am also witness to the strain financially that the rental rate growth and the housing price inflation is having on a lot of folks. And if, you know, we talked about preserving these lands for public enjoyment, but the reality is it's not going to be for native Floridians or for young people. It's going to become a playground for the rich because they're the only ones that are going to be able to afford real estate in this region, bringing their out-of-size wages from, you know, other states and coming here just to enjoy. So I advocate for, you know, essential housing, affordable housing, and also conservation hand in hand with that through smart development in the agricultural reserve. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kerner, members of the county commission. My name is Antonia and thank you for hosting this workshop today on the future of the ag reserve. It is an important discussion as our county continues to grow and look for available opportunities for our residents to work, live, and play. As you are evaluating the comments and presentation today, please also look to consider the entire county as part of this discussion. The ag reserve plan has provided our county significant benefits over the years, but the time has come for us to evaluate how we move forward. The ag reserve was established to preserve farmland and wetlands in order to enhance agricultural activity, environmental, water resources, and open space. We should be applying these same principles to projects and developments outside the ag reserve. If projects come before our county that meets the key priorities, why not extend the same opportunities we do in the ag reserve? If opportunities present themselves that call for development in the ag reserve but preservation in areas outside the ag reserve, they should be considered. It's time we really look at opening the ag reserve so the benefits enjoyed in this area for decades can be applied countywide. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We have Tim Linkus, followed by Steve Homrich, followed by Jennifer Morton.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tim Linkus, 8289 West Pointed Beach Boulevard. Commissioner Sacks, I thank you for coming out to the Vallico nurseries and putting boots on the ground and walking around with me and during the heat. I grew up in Pointed Beach and I can remember when the ag, it wasn't called the ag reserve at the time, but the boundary was Jog Road and then it was moved to the Turnpike. But 42 years ago, my sister Sue Stewart and I and my wife Sandy, we had 10 acres over by Eau Claire. We decided to look for more land and that was my chore to do. And I looked at several pieces and I found this 40 acres that was the northwest quadrant of the Turnpike. There was no Turnpike exit at that time. I took my wife, my beautiful wife Sandy, out, took her out there and I said, I think this is the place. And in 40, 45 years from now, there's going to be houses out here. She looked at me in the eye and told me, you're full of it. There's nobody going to be living out here. Well, I proved her wrong. My intention was, the same as the Logans, have a good career in agriculture and then when time comes to retire, hopefully sell. You don't know if you're going to do it or not. We, of course, were in business long before the, when the ag reserve came down, in '99, when the magic wand was woven. I was not, I did not vote for the bond issue, but I must say, the ag reserve has been a great success and all of staff through the years has done a great job and hard work. Now, when you look at our land, we're right across the street of the Logans. Everything has jumped over us. We have, let's see, I've got schools across the street. I've got the Caradad Center next to us. Oh, right next to my western border is going up a three-story storage unit. I don't know how that got into the ag reserve, but it is. When Bethesda Hospital went in down the road, two miles down the road, it kind of opened the doors and let the horses out of the barn, I really believe. We've got Publix, Winn-Dixie. Now, there's going to be three schools, Wawa, Chick-fil-A, the storage unit, the Caradad, and much, much more. There was a few more things I wanted to say, but it's already been said, so I'll skip over it. But now's the time to relook at some of the areas in the ag reserve. And I think there does need to be a few changes in certain areas. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Just two minutes. Thank you so much, Mr., for your hospitality at your home and in the fields. And as we discussed, this commission and the staff has always been welcome to listen to your viewpoints on things because you've been good county residents and members of the ag reserve. And we will do everything we can to accommodate you as a stakeholder here.
Thank you very much. Everybody be safe.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Steve Homrich. I live in Boynton Beach, Florida. I was part of the original ag reserve committee back in the '90s. And that committee, the farmers, the landowners, didn't have a majority vote in that. It was other special interests that had that. But it was driven by consultants and staff. And there were mistakes made, obviously. The 80/20, as you know, it was directed at people like Mrs. Logan and the Linkuses and the Mole Hills with 40 acres. It's not feasible. It doesn't make sense. So that's why they've been skipped over. What we were told repeatedly by consultants is that, just wait, when the urban service boundary passes you, that's when you will become part of development. It was not meant to be so permanent. Craig Evans with American Farmland Trust said he'd never seen it applied quite this way. He was a consultant and he was promptly fired by the county. So we had expectation that as development came our way, we would wait and we might get some development. The other thing I'd like to point out is, like Lisa said earlier, the county anticipated buying 6,000 acres, therefore 6,000 units would come off. And that's how they got to the 14,000 number. But they didn't buy that. They just bought 2,400. So really, the number should be higher than that. And that's why you have the pressure that you do have because there were that many units left on the market. There is a need for essential housing. There's a few property owners out here that have the properties that can take that. There are major roadways. There are great locations or by commercial areas. It's a perfect win-win opportunity. These people waited so long. My wife and I, fortunately, were able to sell our property and we're out. But these people, we're not leaving behind. They need your help and there is a good solution. And you guys can make that decision. Please don't hire a consultant. They're the ones that got us in this mess in the first place. And you all can make the decisions that would be the best for the county. You know it best and please make the decision that could help everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We have Jennifer Morton, followed by Lauren McClellan, and followed by Mark Levy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Jennifer Morton with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. And I've been working in the ag reserve since the 1990s. In fact, I was the agent that processed the very first 60/40 PUD to be approved. It was Meisner Golf and Country Club. So what are we talking about now? We're talking about the last 5% of the ag reserve. And when you drill down further, there's probably a couple hundred acres along Atlantic Avenue and Boynton Beach Boulevard and State Road 7. Those parcels are between 25 and 40 acres in size. Under today's rules, they wouldn't qualify for a 60/40 or an 80/20 PUD. So I think that's another reason why people feel they've been skipped over. These parcels are strategically located near the commercial nodes along the east-west corridors where farming is not, you've been told it's not feasible. They still have their development rights, so the development rights have not been stripped. It's an excellent opportunity to look at other options for these parcels. As the build-out of the ag reserve is imminent, the opportunity to complete the master plan by providing multifamily housing and workforce housing exists. We will never have that diversity of housing if the density is limited to one unit per acre. So why is quality multifamily housing a benefit to the ag reserve? Multifamily and workforce housing means that the teachers at Sunset Elementary and Middle School will have a place to live close to where they teach. The nurses at Bethesda West or Baptist West Hospital can live close to where they work. Our retail workers and business owners in Delray Marketplace and Canyon Town Centers also can live close to their place of employment. You've heard a lot about climate change and environmental issues. Well, connectivity is an important objective of lead neighborhood design. With the location of the multifamily located close to the commercial, we're creating a network of connectivity of land uses. This reduces energy use and pollutants, including greenhouse gases. Compact mixed neighborhoods where clustering residential near jobs, shopping areas allows the use of land and infrastructure efficiently and conserves economic resources and slows the spread of sprawl. In conclusion, in June of 2019, I prepared my first PowerPoint presentation. The price of a 2-2 in the ag reserve was $514,000. Today, the price of that same 2-2, single-family home, is $740,000. In 14 months, that's a $225,000, $225,000 increase in price. Time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Lauren McClellan. I work for Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I just wanted to talk today and let you know that there's a need for small industrial sites in the ag reserve. The small-scale industrial can support the existing residential in the area by supplying a location for plumbers, for electricians, and other similar types of contractors. There's also a need for these, for this land to support agricultural operations in the area. Machinists, fabricators, they make parts all day long for the farmers out there. So having those uses close to the farming operations would definitely be supportive for the agriculture in the area. And having these locations right on roads would give them easy access to the uses that they serve, the residential, the farms, et cetera. Finally, this industrial land would also serve landscape service industry. Many of the landscape service establishments have been forced to relocate out of the residential areas where the residential roads can't really support the heavy traffic. So putting them on the roads would help, putting them with close proximity to the roads would definitely help keep it off, keep those trucks off the residential streets. And it's also important to have those landscape services next to the farms. They keep their trees in the agriculture area where they get their materials. So having those close to the plant materials is also a good thing. So allowing these uses within close proximity of the residential that they serve helps keep costs low to consumers. And that's critical, especially in these times of inflation. Jennifer just talked about some of the increasing housing costs. Service costs are also going up. So State Road 7 being the perfect location for this industrial because it is, it's a major north-south road that is used for transportation. There's lots of trucks on this road. You see heavy agriculture equipment. You see a bunch of commuters. It's a six-lane divided highway, so there's a lot going on on this road. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mark Levy. I'm president of BBX Industrial, which is a South Florida-based industrial developer. I've got 25 years of experience throughout the United States building. What I would define as light industrial space, which I can define for you in a moment, throughout the country. And there's lots of communities around America, if you will, that are having similar conversations to this. And I thought I'd share with you, you know, some of the observations and things I've learned through the 25 years that I've been doing this. Central to sustainable and profitable agricultural production is the logistics backbone. Currently, the lack of modern distribution and warehousing, as well as modern cold storage facilities proximate to the ag reserve forces the movement of product to distant facilities for sortation, packing, warehousing, and distribution, which substantially increases cost and adds to the financial pressures producers contend with in their business. Modern warehousing, and again, I define light industrial as consumer-centric localized distribution, that's a very easy way of describing it, is really constructed to the highest U.S. Green Building Council standards and maintains LEED certification based on achieving various sustainability benefits and benchmarks. Our lenders, our institutional investors that invest in these projects require that we do that. And that's sort of a formulaic approach they've taken to all new development around the country. Buildings are designed to integrate into communities. Warehouses look more like office buildings today than they did 20 years ago. And we work very hard to make sure they're aesthetically pleasing. Warehousing proximate to population centers means less over-the-road trucks driving longer distances and through local roads to replenish inventories. Furthermore, fleets used by warehousing occupants are quickly moving to natural gas and electrification and have substantially reduced carbon emissions as well as idle noise. Very important. As it relates to the pandemic, this notion of community resiliency is very important. The pandemic has shown us that the strength of the supply chain is critical to ensuring local communities have an uninterrupted source of products of all types, groceries, pharmaceuticals, and traditional consumer items. 20% of all consumer activity is online and people want to be able to get those goods quickly. You know, Amazon wants to have those goods to you in two hours. GoPuff wants to have those goods to you in 30 minutes. Commissioner McKinley, you'd asked about taxes. For a typical 150,000-square-foot e-commerce warehouse, probably costs about $30 million to construct that and will generate another $30 million of investment to fixture and equip that warehouse. So essentially, provides an additional source of sales tax revenue on equipment as well as higher property tax assessments. From a labor standpoint, a typical e-commerce warehouse would employ one worker for every 750 square feet at increasingly high wages. The State Road 7 corridor is one of South Florida's main commercial corridors and provides significant connections to the regional road network spanning multiple states. It is our commercial backbone. I've actually given my comments to staff for the remarks to be put into the record for further clarification. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
We have John Channing-Wo, followed by Jim Knight, followed by Bill Nugent.
I think you pronounced my name wrong. I don't know.
I don't think you're the only one.
It's Channing, by the way.
Channing? Wow.
Yeah, I don't know what you said, but it-
That's a W.
Maybe it's somebody else. I don't know.
Oh, wow. Man, no.
Okay.
How about first?
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Channing. And I'd first like to thank Commissioner Sacks for spearheading this workshop. It's been very, very important. And I'm very impressed with the ideas and things that you said today. You've put a lot of work into it. And I think it's extremely important what you did, so I give you a lot of credit. So thank you. So I've been a resident of Palm Beach County for 34 years. My wife, Ellen, and I have raised four children in a community called Long Lake Estates, which is on Clintmore and Lyons. And every day, I drive by a sign that says, "Welcome to the Ag Reserve," as I head down Atlantic and get on the Turnpike, head down Lyons, get on the Turnpike at Atlantic. Many changes have occurred in this area. As a real estate developer, I have been amazed how prices have increased by hundreds of thousands of dollars for zero-lot line homes. Homes that four to five years ago started at $500,000 are now over $1 million. That's a big, big increase. Now, there have been significant increases in construction costs, land prices, but I think that the increases are mainly due- costs, land prices, but I think that the increases are mainly due because of a lack of supply. And there's an enormous demand because of what COVID has done for our area. The lower taxes in Florida have brought more people to Florida, and a lot of businesses are relocating from the northeast here. So there's a huge demand. Unfortunately, my children have been priced out of the market, and they cannot afford a down payment of $200,000. And it's a problem. And we have a housing crisis in Palm Beach County. It's a real crisis. And I think one of the things that we need to do, which have been discussed, is we do need to build multifamily. Because there are so many people that don't have the cash to put down a down payment. The people that are the workers that work in our centers and our restaurants, they have nowhere to live. I own a shopping center on PGA Boulevard called PGA Commons. I have a restaurant that went out of business three, four months ago because they didn't have enough workers. I have a lot of tenants now that are just holding on. They just don't have the people to work there anymore. And this is all throughout South Florida, but it's really a big problem. So I think that what we need to do is come up with some ideas on how we can try and make it easier and, you know, to build multifamily. So here are my ideas.
Mr. Channing, your time has expired, but we do possibly have a question. Commissioner McKinley?
I had a comment just to confirm his remarks. I know oftentimes when the afternoon gets long, you might think, how are they, are they really paying attention? And yes, we are paying attention. And I just, I'm going to guess I'm the only one up here who is currently renting their living accommodations. And so, as somebody who actually qualifies for workforce housing, I just want to confirm. In March of this year, my lease was renewed in my apartment, and it was renewed, it's gone up a couple hundred dollars a month over the last two renewals, and now it's $2,120 for a very old townhouse that was probably built in the late '70s, early '80s. I looked online on my complex to see what those units are going for right now. That was March 1 of this year. As of October, that same unit is now renting between $4,300 and $5,000 a month. So for people who have lived in this community for a long time, who had those jobs, who are renting, they're about to get their lease renewals and be completely priced out of this county. And you talk about your children not having down payments. A lot of our college graduates, our young professionals, and those that are struggling, they don't have the deposits that they need to be able to even move into a rental. And so I just want you to know that your comments were heard. They struck a chord, and I completely agree with what you're saying. I know that you are out of time, but I see you have a list of recommendations. So if you'll make sure, if you could submit your written comments to the clerks so we can get a copy of that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Channing.
We have Jim Knight, followed by Bill Nugent, followed by Ed. I have no idea. I think it's Ted Manah. I have no-
Good luck.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. I'm a 56-year native of Palm Beach County. My entire life, my kids born and raised here. And they're in that same boat, trying to find an apartment that's affordable. I just wanted to mention that I have been working out here in the Ag Reserve for a long time. It has been a huge success. We're talking about the last 5% of roughly 1,200 acres of land in the Ag Reserve. That huge success, however, came with flexibility over the past 20 years, be it the hospital that was needed out there, be it additional retail that was needed out there, the transfer station, and yes, garbage trucks need a place to park, too. It's a reality. It's a service. It's one of the services that you might have looked at in your overall projection of things. When we talk about clustering and trying to make workforce housing work in the Ag Reserve today, if you took 250 acres and you had to put that on, I think they said 25 acres or approximately about that, you would be paying $500,000 for each apartment for the dirt, not to build the apartment, but just for the dirt. As an example, uptown at Boca Raton, West Glades Road, almost out to 441, that just sold at a record-breaking number, which was 504,000, not for just the land, but the entire complex per unit. So these are not housing that's going to deplete the valuation of other housing in the neighborhood, but it's going to prop it up. In closing, and I don't want to take up my full time, because I know we're all being pushed here today, but you have a very competent staff. I want to commend them on all the hard work they've done. There's competent neighbors, be it Cobra, Alliance of Delray, as well as competent industry, Jennifer Morton, Lauren, other planners out there. And we don't need to kick this down the road, hire a consultant to put it up on the shelf, another document that's $500,000. I greatly respect and appreciate if you would take care of business today and move this forward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks, you recognize-
Just one minute, Mr. Knight. We're not done with you, and I'll be very, very quick. Because I know the hour is late. Our kids grew up together and went to the same school.
Yours tutored mine, by the way. Yours were a lot smarter than mine. And that's a fact, everybody. You can, I have the, not, not my receipts, but I have, I have the proof.
Anyways, anyways, we know the problem that our kids can't afford, as Commissioner McKinley was talking about, can't afford to come back home and get places here. But it's also very important that you, as Mr. Channing before you, make sure that you tell us to cooperate with whatever is done today, and I don't know what it's going to be, but at least to have your voice heard. Because you just talked about uptown, 456 units and 37 acres. Seems like it's a good prognosis of what possibly we could do in this area as well. So I welcome your continuing input as we move forward on the development. Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, the tutoring did help out quite a bit with the kids.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for this workshop today. My name is Bill Nugent, and I'm a resident of West Palm Beach. The issue you're all here discussing today has very little to do with my area of Palm Beach County and where I live today. And that's why I'm here today. That's what needs to change. The Ag Reserve was a great idea when it was first adopted decades ago. I think we need to take a fresh look at an old idea. The concept of the Ag Reserve, where we are allowed, we have allowed development in the Ag Reserve in exchange for preservation in the Ag Reserve, was a great idea in its day. Development in the Ag Reserve should help with preservation throughout our county, our entire county. Palm Beach County government should be able to look at our entire county, identify the highest and best needs, where those dollars could be more effective and deliver more for all of our Palm Beach County residents. We have big issues of need in our county: water management, affordable housing, workforce housing, and the preservation of agriculture, excuse me, agricultural and other environmental lands, for instance. If someone wants to build there, the Ag Reserve, we should probably let them, but not without extracting benefits for our entire county. We should be requiring land preservation or workforce housing from these projects, but not just in the Ag Reserve. Why limit the success and opportunities of the Ag Reserve to just one area of our county? I think it's time we all benefit from the opportunities that we have because of development. We should be thinking of this in terms of what does the best for the most when it comes to our residents and our natural resources. The Ag Reserve can play an important role in ensuring Palm Beach County benefits as a whole. Palm Beach County residents from across Palm Beach County invested in the creation of the Ag Reserve when we supported a $100 million bond. I think it's time we think about paying taxpayers that invested $100 million dividends with a more holistic approach to the county's needs when it comes to our natural resources and our taxpayers. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
Commissioner Weiss, you recognize?
I just want to thank Mr. Nugent for being here. He's one of my neighbors. And to thank you for being here and representing people from the east side of the county that we do care and that we pay attention to what's happening all throughout Palm Beach County. And I really appreciate your remarks today.
Okay. We have Ed Ted Manah, followed by MB Hague, followed by Neil Ambrosio, followed by Ida Foster.
I guess I'll go. Neil Ambrosio, I'm here representing Canyon Lakes Homeowners Association. I think I sent you all an email yesterday from our board. Hopefully, the internet delivered it. You learn a lot standing in the back of the room, listening to speakers and listening to staff. And I think what's been apparent to me in listening to that and having the opportunity to speak to some Commissioners on some of these visits is this needs to be the start of a process. I think there's a lot of different views in the room. In preparation for this workshop, the Ag Reserve communities in Boynton have done a lot of meeting. We've met with each other. We've thrown a lot of ideas, some of the same ideas that were thrown out here. And I think they're not mutually exclusive from each other. You know, I negotiate bargaining agreements for a living. So whenever you have a giant table and people who disagree, you got to try to find some common ground. I'm sympathetic to the Logans. I'm sympathetic to the farmers. And I'm not the only one. Our residents are as well. I think we want to be involved in the process, but we do think it's a process. You know, anybody who thinks that it can be settled in three-minute soundbites right here probably isn't looking at the whole thing. Maybe we don't need high-paid consultants. Maybe we use the finest university system in the country and get some help there. But there probably needs to be a little bit more data injected into the argument as opposed to just a 20-year-old study that maybe doesn't have a time and a place in this moment in time. So I know I can tell you what was said in some of those rooms. Commissioner Sacks honored us with her presence. She came out and met with us. And I think she would tell you that, yeah, well, there's some things we definitely don't want. You know, nobody wants to see an Amazon warehouse in the Ag Reserve. But there's probably more things that we do want. And they're not necessarily prohibitive, or not necessarily, you know, let's say no to everything. We have some ideas. A lot of them surround around, you know, agrahoods and agriculture and farm-to-table and those things. I don't know if we want uptown Boca, but, you know, everything's a negotiation. So I guess what we would implore you, as, you know, my community certainly, if Canyon Lakes, who kind of sits in ground zero, and I think what we've heard the other communities say is, you know, Joe's got a really nice table out there at Irish Acres. And I think that reasonable people can come to a table and solve unrealistic, what appear to be unrealistic problems. And I think there's a lot of people that feel like we're in an unrealistic situation. But if we get enough people at the table and we foster the ability to talk, we can figure this out. These are not impossible problems compared to what's going on in the world. So, Mayor, I'll give you 20 seconds back. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Save it for next time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. For the record, MB Hague, 1353 Born Tribe in Jupiter, 33458. I'm speaking as part of the Grassroots Coalition from North County. I was here and voted as a county resident to help pass the bond issue for the county commissioners for $100 million using to purchase properties in the Ag Reserve because I value the reserve and land preservation. The residents of Jupiter have shown their conviction to the importance of setting aside land for preservation through our two land acquisition program bond referendums. One passed in 2004 for 17 million, acquiring almost 60 acres of land. The other passed in 2019, authorizing another 20 million to fine land, and we added eight acres of that in May of 2021. Just as Jupiter residents have invested financially in our town, we also have a financial investment in preserving the Ag Reserve in the county. Supporting the recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners not make changes to the comprehensive master plan that created the Ag Reserve is a top priority. There are many economic and environmental challenges that the Ag Reserve helps to alleviate locally. But perhaps at this point in time, there's another reason why the Ag Reserve and the agricultural economy of Palm Beach County needs to be even more protected and embraced from a national perspective. After two decades of drought out west, reservoirs are depleted. Lake Powell alone is 50 feet lower than it was last year. Lake Mead is extremely low on water. There's not enough water to meet demand. For the first time ever, the federal government has declared a water shortage on the Colorado River, and farmers in Arizona are among the first who face significant cuts in water. Dealing with the reality of water shortages in the areas that produce food puts a different perspective and narrative on the value of the Ag Reserve and why it's so crucial that no changes be made. We are not responsible to provide housing in the Ag Reserve for those who want to move here. What we hope we are responsible for is to preserve, conserve, and be stewards for that land. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We have Ida Foster, followed by Mario Cartaya, followed by Marty Perry.
I'm Mario Cartaya. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Mario Cartaya. I'm the founder, CEO, and chief designer for a highly successful Cartaya and Associate Architects located in Fort Lauderdale. We have been the planners, architects for numerous nationally and internationally recognized developments, such as the Miramar Town Center, recipient of a National AIA Award, and Wall Street Journal recognition as America's first truly mixed-use livable town development. The complimentary and off-grid Indigo Island Development, recipient of several international awards and recognition, El Centro Yunque, a complete self-sustained mixed-use development in Puerto Rico, and now the completely off-the-grid Nueva Lima, a new mixed-use capital city for Peru, drawing rave international reviews as a model for future capital cities throughout the world. My practice is now entering its 43rd year. Commissioners and staff, should you fulfill the diverse and mixed-use portion of the master plan before you today, you will not be alone. You will have the support of all major professional design organizations behind you, including the Urban Land Institute, the American Institute of Planners, and the American Institute of Architects, all who recommend mixed-use developments with the inclusion of diverse and workplace housing. Places like Celebration Point, Seaside, Hale Plantation, and the Miramar Town Center just in the state of Florida, as well as hundreds of similar mixed-use master plan developments all over America, have now historically proven their success. Simply stated, it is the right thing to do. It is a 21st century thing to do. And time is of the essence. You have the data, the information, and the success story that show how imperative it is for you to decide today to move forward. You, and the benefit of the community at large, should not wait another day, let alone another three years, to address the future. As an architect, I implore you to make a design decision, not just for today's needs, but for the residents of tomorrow as well. As an architect, As an architect, I think it's the right thing to do. Let's move our community forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have Attorney Marty Perry. But I just want to call some other people just to make sure. Roger Fina, Matt Gitkin, Amy Wilks, David Shilson, and Ed Teneman, and Ida Foster.
Commissioner Murray, now you're recognized.
Thank you. Matt Gitkin was here earlier. He is from the Jupiter Farms area and has actually emailed me his comments, which I will forward to all of you.
Mr. Perry, you're recognized, sir.
Good afternoon, Marty Perry. For the record, my good friend Dagmar Braas referenced me earlier as a person who might be coming knocking on the door. And as you all know, I've been talking to each and every one of you over the past couple of years relative to a piece of property that was referenced by staff as Brookside Parcel. It's a parcel that consists of two pieces that are contiguous and immediately to the north of and adjacent to the Delray Marketplace. And that's a 75-acre parcel that was the subject of a purchase by, with Ag bonds back around 2004, somewhere in that vicinity. And then the county recognized that they had made a mistake. They couldn't use the Ag bonds to purchase that, so they advertised it for sale. The first time it was advertised, no one responded. The second time, there were three respondents. One of them was my client, Dick Bowman, who's here today, and two other parties. Dick Bowman ended up being the purchaser. He purchased it for less than what the county paid for it. Frankly, didn't think the value was there, what the county had paid for it. The reality is, is that there's a lot of history with that piece of property, which was a horse ranch at one time, then was a tree farm. And the aspect to that is that the tree farm made it very difficult for future farming. Dick has tried to farm it for a number of years. But over the years, what's occurred there, and I first got involved about six or eight years ago, basically, the school district through its chair, Frank Barbieri, had approached me with a need for an elementary school. We had some discussions. Subsequent to that, Jill Holmes offered to provide a couple of other schools in the Ag Reserve area, as well as some cash. That didn't come to fruition. The school district came back to me again. We spent about two years, the past two years, working on that. I met with their staff. They expressed the need. In fact, Frank Barbieri met with me, together with each one of you or most of you, to explain the school's needs. In any event, that's now falling apart again. The reality is, however, and I think Commissioner Sacks' comments were well-taken, when she starts talking about mixed use. And I personally have been kind of involved with what you now refer to as the Ag Reserve, which was originally, going back to when I first came to Palm Beach County in 1964, was the Range Line. It was known as the Range Line for probably the better part of another 30 years before it became the Ag Reserve. And the difficulty with that, starting in the '70s, when a lawyer rancher by the name of Edgar Hamilton came in and argued about the development of a comprehensive plan in 1972, where the county was painting everything west of, basically, Jog Road, green, which allowed for a density of one unit per two and a half acres or one-to-one on a PUD. And no one really wanted that, but the difficulty was that all those farmers down there in the Range Line area needed land pressure in order to borrow money in order to keep farming. And that's what led to all these discussions that brought us to the Ag Reserve, and that was some way to provide some type of financial stability for these farmers to be able to borrow money to continue farming. That's what led to what is now known as the Ag Reserve, which frankly was a compromise. Now, if you look at what's happening and then listen to staff and I-
Your time has expired, but I do have a question.
Sure.
You, more than anybody, let me be careful, you have a very deep history in this county and dating back to 1964. You've worked in, I would assume, all areas of the county in your professional services. I've met with you on that particular project. I'm sure the other members of the board have. I'm aware that, at least through my discussions with members of the school board, and I think it was testified to here today, that they do need an elementary and a middle school projected in the Ag Reserve. I don't think they mentioned a high school. Given all that, what is your advice to this board in terms of how you'd like to see this final chapter? What you think the most effective actions this board can take in this final chapter, so to speak?
I think that, I think the Ag Reserve has really kind of worked out fairly well. You've preserved 13,000 acres already as in conservation. That's more than half of the Ag Reserve area. There are people still farming down there. Mr. Bowman leases from you the land that his family sold you. There are other farmers that are working down there. The reality is, it is working. How much longer it will work is another question, but the fact is, is that there is room for things like Commissioner Sacks is talking about. And I think Jennifer Morton mentioned it, and I think she had some credibility in her comments. There are some specific areas that you can look at that make sense. I was interested because they mentioned the Lenox Ameri Project, which is really on US-1 in the northern Palm Beach area. And that project was a failed shopping center that became a workforce housing rental apartment site because it's right next to Florida Power and Light. You had all these employees there. The reality is, if you look at the areas like I'm talking about, this particular piece, you've got the Delray Marketplace. There was a potential, and still is a potential, for a school, or it could be something else. You've got the hospital that you just approved. There's a potential for workforce housing right in there, so that everything is right in the same place. That's the type of stuff that you look for in terms of mixed-use housing. It makes sense that the whole package is there. The gentleman across the street, Bo, there's another complementary type used in that area. I think you have targeted areas that you can look to. And that's my thinking on this subject.
When you reference workforce housing, is it implied within that definition that there are government restrictions on the amount that can be assessed to the renter?
Well, there are restrictions relative to the workforce housing in terms of, you can only rent there in terms of certain levels of income.
And then, when you say workforce housing, does that contemplate fee simple ownership as well?
It could. It could. It could either be rental or fee simple. And one of the other unintended consequences, you've got all these homes, there's going to be 14,000 of them eventually. Most of them are basically 55 and over communities. That's creating a need for assisted living in that area. Where are you going to put that? I mean, the answer has always been, well, they can travel east of the turnpike. Well, that's not, that doesn't really work that well.
All right. Well, thank you. I look forward to continued dialogue with you, and I appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I serve the last two cards for Joe Malvahill and Susan Malvahill.
Mr. Mayor, Christine Hemphill has a card in, and she circled that she wanted to speak.
Okay, and I know I, are you Christine, ma'am? Christine, for some reason, we didn't get the card, or maybe we set it in here. But please, if you would approach the microphone and you can speak.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all of my Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank the four Commissioners that I got to meet with. I didn't get to meet with all of them in the last few months. My name is Joe Malvahill from Malvahill Nursery. My farm's at 9821 Happy Hollow Road in Delray Beach. I've been in the nursery business. My family's been in it since '76. I've been doing it full-time since 1980. And, you know, the nursery business has been a tough business, and I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what we could do for an exit strategy. We're only talking about, like, five 40-acre pieces of property. You know, I'm pretty much the only one that runs the properties now. The other three properties, you know, from the Logans, the Vallico, even Paul O'Keen's Place Morning Star, they're all rented out to somebody because they're not in the business anymore. So anyway, it's just been tough, and I hope you can help me out here, because I want to be like my friend Steve Homrich over here. Not like my other friend Mrs. Logan and Tim Linkus, you know? They've waited a long time for this. And Commissioner Sacks, when you were talking about the farmers you went and visited, most of those people either sold their TDRs and benefited that way or sold their property. You know, they're all good people, and they're friends of mine. And Pat O'Brien, you know, he's sold his development rights too, so he's happy to be farming. You know, I didn't sell mine, and neither did any of these people. And anyway, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And ma'am, we do have your comments. Did you want us to read them into the record, or did you want to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Very good.
Thank you. Christine Hemphill, M Street, Lake Worth. And I've lived here, we bought our house in 1996. I'm a retired biologist, and my career is in seed research, vegetable production, and bio-rational pest control. And I think this is a major decision that now we're at here at 20 years, more important than ever. And if you just take the EAA together with the Ag Reserve and look at our fact that Palm Beach County is producing first in the nation in some of our winter vegetable and fruit crops nationwide this side of Nagales, Arizona. So regardless of whether the land is actually being used exactly for crops right now, the fact that it is open and available is what's most important on a nationwide scale. And it's a little scary that our few people here in this one county make a decision that does impact the nation on such a big level. And when you look at the issue of the fossil fuels and how the future is going to go, we know that food importing is not going to be as advisable in the future. Our population growing and food being produced here within the United States, especially fresh produce being very important nationwide. And if you look at California, we've lost a lot in California. And I was there 40 years ago. You could see Silicon Valley being the last of the orchards down, and houses there now. And they, you end up in a lot of that area with people my age and the next generation older talking about the past and how they really regretted allowing development to keep going and not keeping an agricultural area in a certain soil that they had that was pertinent to a certain crop. At that point, I'm speaking of an area that happened to be the world's largest prune producer. So that's, what we have in the Ag Reserve is a special soil. It's extremely important to honor that. When we went last week to hear the Peruvian rainforest speakers at the university, the man talking about that said, well, we allowed this thing to be there because for science we're doing that, but no road. Because when they put a road, you know what happens next. That's all he had to say. Everybody knew what he meant. Ta-da. So what we have is open land there. That's an open area that needs to be for the future of the food for this country. And it also is our water and all the other reasons to do with replenishing, holding water. And just as an aside, the light industrial, 16 acres with no conservation is not a good idea. You don't want 16 acres of cement incompatible with this situation. So I say, keep it like it is. Within the 60/40, we have plenty of room to accommodate the needs for that. And the suburban development needs to be in the suburban areas. The Ag Reserve is a national treasure.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Suzanne Malvahill. Along with my brother, we own property at 9821 Happy Hollow Road in Delray Beach. Our family bought property prior to the Ag Reserve in 1976, and that first piece of property became Tivoli Isles on 441. What I'd like to speak with you about today, and first thank you all, as well as the staff for the presentation, is about perspective. And the perspective that I'd like to share is the snapshot that was presented. If we were to look at that snapshot in terms of what is accounted for and what is remaining, 92% is accounted for, 8% is remaining. And if we take it down one more notch, there are six parcels out of that 8% that are between 40 and 66 acres along 441, Boynton Beach Boulevard, Atlantic Avenue, Lyons Road, Acme Dairy. Those six parcels include the Logans, the Linkuses, the Bargus, Bargus's and Linkus's together, our property, Morning Star, and the Tahiri, which is Gabe. That's it. So when I stand before you and when we talk about this redoing of this Ag Reserve, I think the mayor's comment about the last chapter is very well said. And the fact that we have preserved 58% of the Ag Reserve is another success for the Ag Reserve. So why do these families keep coming back? Why have I been coming here for seven years? Because we were left out of the plan. That's why. We were left out of the plan. So when we talk about in 1980, when the Ag Reserve was formed, what happened in 1998 is what affected these families. And that was the Resolution Number 980851. That resolution blanketed our properties with restrictions that aren't affected, we were not affected then. We're affected when we try to sell. When the Logans have had 30 people try to buy their property and walk away. When the Morning Stars have had two people walk away. The Linkuses, the prior buyer, walked away. Bargus's, property owner, buyer, walked away. Because we can't break through these barriers without your help. Without your help. And what do we need? I think it's evident in this meeting that we need workforce housing and industrial on 441. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Malvahill. I just want to make one more offer to anyone. If you had submitted a card already and we did not call you, or we called you and you missed your opportunity, this is the last opportunity to make comments today at this workshop. All right, very good. Well, that concludes public comment. I know that there were some comments that were submitted online. Did you want to just attach those and give it to the clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we have over 40 comment cards that we'll receive and file.
Very good, without objection. All right, we're back in questions and discussion on where to go from here. Do professional staff have any follow-up comments?
We're certainly able to answer any questions. We do have a couple of slides, if the board so wishes, to get into the actual items to discuss on direction. We can certainly go through that now.
Very good.
Slide 109, Valerie. Oh, we have the clicker here.
Vice Mayor, did you want to make comments before these?
No, I'll go after them.
Okay.
So we have two kind of general themes that we're presenting today. One is the industrial, and one is the workforce or higher-density residential. For industrial requests, we're getting in future land use amendments because we don't have any way to say no, because there's no policies in the plan. There's no prohibition to these applications, and then there's no guidance. So we're taking in these applications. We have one scheduled for the third. And so the direction that we're looking for today is whether we continue to take those future land use atlas applications, or perhaps set up policies in the plan through an amendment process that we can come back with. And if we did do amendments in the plan, we would probably seek guidance on whether or not we limit to light only or allow any type of industrial use, whether we would prohibit those commercial uses that would be subject to the commercial cap, whether or not we would allow all of the future land use designations, which is, we have an industrial future land use designation, we have Economic Development Center, and then, or whether we pursue that New Commerce or something similar for a light industrial designation. We'd be interested if you would want this type of use or future land use designation to be limited to certain roadways, maybe the major ones of State Route 7, Boynton, Atlantic, and such, or maybe overlays, something that we didn't really talk about in the presentation, but that was discussed years ago during the landscaper discussions, was, you know, adding a boundary around certain locations and saying, this is where industrial might be appropriate. Again, at the preserve areas, the commercial today, less than 16 acres, does not have a preserve area. Anything commercial or residential, well, commercial greater than 16 acres does have a 60% minimum preserve area. So we would ask for direction on that with the board if we were to establish policies in the plan. And- And then also to identify if we thought, should we cap the acreage? Capping square footage with commercial has been quite a challenge, so capping acres might be a little easier for us to accomplish if we were to cap it, or maybe have no cap and just have location requirements. And that's basically it. And one thing that's not on there too is concurrent zoning application. I think as we're moving into the future, a lot of times you see zoning and planning on the same day on a zoning hearing. It really ties things up nicely. And Patrick Rutter has been for 10 or 15 years a huge proponent of bring that zoning and planning together at the end, have one adoption hearing, let you see the site plan. And that we're finding with the residential density amendment and a lot of the requests we're getting nowadays, it's really, really nice, I think, for the public to come out and see everything together. So that would be a direction as well, if you would like to see policies for industrial, whether or not we would require a concurrent zoning application. Most of them do. I think we're up in like 90% of our future land use planning applications do have a zoning application as well. So I think those are some of the topic areas that we had to present.
Very good. So that just speaks to industrial. And I think it's important that I give Commissioner Sax the first opportunity to speak here, because it is her district. And I think we're all interested to see what, with a little bit more specificity, what her intent and vision is. So it would now be an appropriate time, Commissioner Sax, to give us some idea of where you'd like to go.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I think that we've all learned so much about what the public wants and doesn't want, and how long it's been since the county has reviewed these ordinances and maximums and 60-40 and PUDs and TDRs, and what the effect and the consequences have been as a result of all of these rules and regulations. My question to the staff and maybe to Mr. Rutter is, if we, if, one of the proposals given by staff was either to do nothing or to review what we have in policy to date, if we decide to, if the board decides to review the considerations of what has been the direction of the Ag Reserve for the last 15, 20 years, at what is the next step with your staff? What occurs next? So we have some certainty in not only how we should proceed, but also how the businesses and the community should proceed as well.
Commissioner, I think your, the board's direction today would dictate a lot of where we would go and the timing aspect of it. As it pertains to just the industrial, for instance, if there was clear direction on the point, we would need a period of time to let us go away and work on some policies and write some things, maybe return to you if that was the board's pleasure with, I'm going to call it a schematic form, before we bring them forward in a formal hearing process. Or probably a deeper topic will be residential, which we'll take up. And that we really would need the board's feedback on. If we had direction on creation of a policy that does something, really being oversimplifying here, but that does X, we could follow the same path. You've heard a lot today, and I think, and I'm sure there'll be more discussion and deliberation. I would say that we're anticipating getting some measured direction, maybe returning. You're going to give us some things to think about and maybe to look at. But certainly if the board coalesces around an idea, we can go back and work on that idea and return to you probably a little more quickly. The one other piece I would add in that is, in both contexts, outreach to the public at all. I would ask the board to give us any direction if there's an anticipation that we would want to present any of these ideas publicly before. Or I think what we would probably recommend would be to return to you with the ideas, make sure we're on the path that you're looking for before we proceed it. So I apologize, Commissioner. There's a lot to it, but I wanted to make sure we covered all the bases, and I hope I answered your question.
If I may.
Please, this is your show.
Oh, you know, we, we've, not we, not me, but the board has done this before. And somebody remarked, and I think the mayor had said before, it's like death by a thousand cuts. My recommendation is if we could give the staff direction to review the policies that are obsolete, to review those issues that we have heard today, some of us for the first time, some of us have heard it many, many times before, of issues that we should keep to maintain the initial mission of the Agricultural Reserve, which as I said before, preserve, protect, and support agriculture. Give them the amenities for the people of the Ag Reserve. I always laugh when I, or I smile when I see people tell us what we should have in our community, and they don't live in our community. So give, and this is the mission that I took from slide 30 of your presentation, to have the amenities for the people of the Ag Reserve, and also to make sure that we have the infrastructure, especially an office for Ms. Gannon, so she doesn't get upset again. So, but I think that I would like to, with the mayor's permission at least, to give your, give the staff direction to come back to us with those, to come back with us with those provisions that are probably obsolete for 2021 and for the next five to 10 years, and your recommendation or your review of those provisions that should be kept in order to preserve the integrity of the Ag Reserve as it was envisioned in 1980. And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to leave it up to you in terms of how we move forward on this.
Well, and I appreciate that deference, but, you know, I don't know that there's a consensus at this time by the board, we haven't had sufficient discussion, that any policies are obsolete or not obsolete. I think the law is as it stands. And my hope was, I've certainly, we've certainly had a lot of public input today, but if there was a particular policy objective that you wanted to achieve in your district, whether it be industrial or related to increased commercial or residential, but I don't know that we could task the staff with deciding what is obsolete at this point. Does the staff have any interest in responding?
The, obviously, the comprehensive plan with the goals, objectives, and policies, we continue to maintain and uphold. There is no policy per se that would be deemed obsolete unless there was a specific, you know, by 2021, we shall do X, Y, and Z. We don't have any of those types of policies within the Ag Reserve tier. So really, it's the direction that we are seeking is to, as you've seen, these two applications are asking for high density and another one's asking for industrial, not just, we're not doing site-specific, but we don't have any rules on industrial in the Ag Reserve. So please provide us with some direction on that, and we can come back with a staff report, giving the details of data and analysis, and the same with the residential, which we'll present in a few minutes regarding the types of density that you want to see in the Ag Reserve. And I know that's very broad, and this is a workshop, we don't have our typical staff report that we provide, because there are so many different things to think about. And so that's the type of direction that we were seeking.
I think it would be helpful then, Commissioner Sax, to open it up to other members of the board, and maybe we can sort of cultivate some feedback in that regard. Is that acceptable? Then we'll go to Vice Mayor Wannroth, and then Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to apologize, but I'm going to have to leave at 4 o'clock. But I'm going to make a suggestion. I mean, I have 10 pages of notes that I want to digest. There's 40 comment cards, which I haven't seen yet, which are now incorporated into the record, which I'm going to hope that we can have distributed to us. We're going to meet as a zoning board on Thursday. My recommendation is that we just think about this over the next 48 hours, rather than trying to give staff direction. I agree with you, Mayor, this is policy. This is not something that we can look to staff to recommend to us. I think they're looking to us to recommend to them. So if it's the will of the board, I think if we could tack this on to our agenda for Thursday and come back to this now after we've heard all these comments, have an opportunity to review what we have in our own notes and the comment cards, I think we'd have a better opportunity to give staff a more comprehensive set of directions and have some more time to discuss this. But that's my thought.
All right, very good. And I appreciate that. I certainly would appreciate some time to digest some of the concepts that were put forth today. And we don't want to give any direction, especially since I know you have an important meeting to go to, we certainly need time to comment on this in public and seek feedback from members of our districts individually. Commissioner McKinley, then we'll go to Commissioner Marino.
Thank you, Mayor Kerner. I have a little bit of a different perspective. First, I want to thank staff for entertaining my request back in May to actually hold this workshop. As you know, I laser focused on a couple of different issues. I think it's the person who lives in the real world and is faced with the day-to-day struggles that most of our families are going through and trying to, while I've got three kids and I'm finally an empty nester, they get more expensive when they leave the nest in between car insurance and health insurance and college tuition and textbooks and utility bills and student housing and all the other great things that come along with trying to support three kids. A lot of our families are facing that same reality, and finding a place to live is becoming more and more of a struggle. And I told you my personal story. I've got countless stories like that of friends who are renting and have just been priced out of their homes. So that was my first request, having this workshop. And I'm okay if we want to wait till Thursday to digest that. I just, a couple of comments, and then I have two requests. My first, a couple of comments that were made today. First, there was a comment made from one of the HOA representatives about not wanting the Agricultural Reserve to become a regional attractor. And I wholeheartedly disagree with that statement. I think if we have this award-winning program that the county has received national recognition for developing, we should show it off. I know a hidden gem in my district is Swank Farms. And for those of you that have been out to Swank Farms and been able to enjoy their farm-to-table dinners or their green markets that they hold on Saturday, you realize what a prize that is to have in your community. And to draw families into, too many people don't know where their food comes from. And if you can pair that up with an entertainment value and show people where their food comes from, I think they'll have a general, a better respect for agriculture in the state of Florida and particularly in our community. And so I'm looking at Ron and thinking, I mentioned earlier, please come back to us with some suggestions on how we can increase vertical operations on the existing farms that are there, provide agritourism incentives to be able to allow an extra income for those family farms in the Ag Reserve, and that we can show to our residents why it's important to protect agriculture. The other comments came from former Vice Mayor Jim Chard. His comment, and Jim, I don't know if you're still here, but the comment of preserve the agricultural character, and then Joe O'Donnell's comments of the rural parkways. And when I met with him, he spoke heavily about the need for trails, a trail system. I tried to talk about that in the ecotourism comments that I made. But other than seeing the standard-issue street sign that says, "Welcome to the Ag Reserve," you can't tell that you're in a farming community. The design of the buildings and the homes, I mean, nothing in there screams, "This is an agricultural community." Drive into Arden, and you see immediately a big red barn, you see a little local marketplace for the residents who live in there, you see 10 acres, because we just approved an additional five-acre plot, 10 acres of community farms that the residents actually can go, I think, once or twice a month and pick up their box of fresh produce. And they're doing things that promote that, and we don't see that in the Ag Reserve. So I think moving forward, if we had design standards or something that showed it was a farming community, or at least had a history of being a farming community, and, you know, that, because a lot of people aren't going to get out to Belle Glade, and they're not going to go, you know, 20 miles south on US 27 to see the 440,000 acres we've got out there in ag production. So their experience with agriculture and farming in our county and the tremendous impact it has is going to be felt on this side of the county. And so those types of agricultural character initiatives that we can put forward, I would love to see that happen. That rural parkway, Mr. O'Donnell is absolutely correct. Those roadways need to be designed so that they are farm-equipped friendly, they are equestrian-friendly. You don't ride a horse on a paved bike path. It just doesn't work that way. See what Wellington has done. See the partnerships that Wellington has made with Florida Power and Light, where they've put the trails alongside the power line easements. And let's get creative on how we make this an equestrian, you know, it's not just row crops and nursery farms, it's also equestrian, how we can make it a little bit more friendly. And then my last comment is really the priority I had for requesting this workshop. And several speakers mentioned this, including the very well-spoken young woman, and I don't see her in here, but I've got to track that card down because she was good, about replicating the Ag Reserve model across the county. This isn't the only area where we've got ag. And there are other areas, and I am not shy about it. There is a 5,000-acre tract of farmland in my district, and we're promoting agriculture, but with the initiatives we've taken in the Ag Reserve, we are also promoting environmental conservation. There is a parcel of land in my district that can do both. And I think that we really need to look at the opportunities we have. We talked about the swap. Brian talked about the focus of that was farmland for the sake of time. I'm not going to ask Jeremy McBrien to get up here and talk about the environmental benefits at this time. I think most of us are familiar with those. But if you're not, there's a real big opportunity here to circumvent the large bureaucratic process known as the Army Corps of Engineers and try to do our own local Everglades restoration project and restore the natural flows to the Loxahatchee River, while at the same time recharging the wellfields for the city of West Palm Beach, which also supplies the water to Palm Beach and South Palm Beach, has the ability to send clean water into the Lake Worth Drainage District areas, and also to help some of the county's wellfields. It's something that we ought to look at. I have a year left on this county commission. I don't want to slow-walk this. I'm tired of everything taking so damn long to get done and hire a consultant and do charrettes and do this and that. Susan Mulvaughill pointed out, there are six or seven parcels left that we're talking about, and there's a potential expansion of this type of program across the county. Those are the two things that we're looking at. I want to give staff direction to entertain a proposal about that, I hate calling it a land swap, but I like the idea of replicating the Ag Reserve model to other areas of the county, so I'm going to call it that. I'd like them to look into that and bring something back to us for consideration in December. We have a December 15 zoning meeting, and I'd like to see it on the calendar for them for discussion.
Madam Administrator, you're recognized.
Just like some clarification, so we are really clear on what you're asking us to do. Are you asking us to apply rules in the ITID district for that particular large parcel of land that's similar to what's in the Ag Reserve? Or are you, we talking about the swap?
I'm talking about that one to start with. I'm sure that Commissioner Marino has, she's got some farmland in her district and a lot of equestrian areas in her district, but today I'm specifically talking about the Indian Trail Grove parcel and the acreage, Loxahatchee area.
And seeing how we can apply the same type of principles in the Ag Reserve in those particular areas.
Yes, and notably being able to transfer development rights within those types of areas of the county. I want to protect the acreage in my district, input development where development is occurring, and not have to expand development into an area that has extremely valuable environmental purposes and can help us do one of the Everglades restoration projects. environmental purposes and can help us do one of the Everglades restoration projects.
I just, again, I want to be clear, like most of you, or some of you, I raised a kid on this, too. I've been in this since I was a kid. So I want to, ever since I've been involved in it, it has been where the ag reserve density was allowed to be transferred out, but not necessarily in. So it changes the deep principles of the ag reserve, and I just want to be clear when we go to do it, that we're doing it in a manner in which we're going to result, bring back you the results that you're looking for. So that would be the first step that we would need to address. If I am incorrect, please speak up, but that's what I remember. That was one of the basic principles, not to transfer density into the ag reserve. If this is the wish of the board, then we will definitely go back, work out a plan. The only reason that I was asking for a consultant to come in and provide us with input is it's just not those six parcels that we're talking about. It is those parcels along with the entire ag reserve and how we're going to place, as everyone knows, I am in full support of workforce-affordable housing. I have been for the last 20-plus years. So I, I'm happy it is now a major issue for a lot of important folks that help push this through. But we would need to, I think, if we're going to preserve agriculture, we would need to make sure we're looking at the entire area, what we're going to propose to bring in, and where would that be located? And it's not just on six parcels. It could be a number of places depending upon our mode of transportation out there. Currently, we don't have a whole lot of mass transit in the area. If that is what we're going to do, we need to make sure that we're putting, citing housing in places it should be on the right thoroughfares, we're able to create routes that will go there and be as efficient as possible. There are a myriad of things that we ought to be considering if we're going to bring a reasonable plan back to this board for direction. So I just want to be extremely clear on the direction that you're given, because we've got a lot of projects going on, and having that outside consultant or FAU or ULI, any of the planning agencies working with us in order to bring you a better plan.
Ms. Baker, I respect that, but I got elected in 2014. Since then, I have served with four different makeups of this commission, and every single time, for instance, the first conversation around the ag reserve took three years. So by the time we finally brought something for the board to consider, the makeup of the board was different, and a couple of members of the board had to start over with the learning curve. When we talked about landscape services, I, what did we talk about that, for four years, five years? I mean, that was three different makeups of the county commission before something came forward. That's five years that applicants have to sit waiting for us to work our way through consultants and all the different public hearings to continue to just kick the can down the road. I'm tired of kicking the can down the road. We know that there are, there are competing interests in this area. We're trying to protect agriculture, and we're trying, or to maintain it. We're trying to add enhancements for environmental protection. We're trying to apply and allow for a mixed type of housing so our families can afford to have places to live, and we're trying to be as accommodating, I guess, to some of the different business interests, mainly those that actually belong in this area, like your landscape services. They belong in this area, and so to be able to create a new category that allows them to be there without having to go through the whole privately-initiated process and that hearing, and then transmittal hearing, and then final hearing, and then the two zoning hearings, and then all the advisory boards that they have to go through. I mean, stop kicking the can down the road. Let's bite the bullet and make a decision. I am asking you, there's two different things we're looking at. We're looking at the workforce housing and the light industrial, and I'm also looking at the expansion of this project to protect farmland and environmental reasons for this land in the acreage. They're two different things. I'm asking you on the second one, come on, we know that there's conversation has taken, is taking place, and people are talking about this idea. I'm going to imagine that there's probably some sort of proposal out there that needs to be massaged a little bit from what was presented to us back in 2016. Meet with, meet with them, you know? Meet with the company or the developer that has that proposal, review it, and bring something back to us in December to talk about. I don't want to wait six months to even initiate the conversation. I'm not saying this board approves it. I'm just saying, give us the opportunity to have a public conversation about it, and the sooner the better, and I think we can do that in December. If we get the staff direction to move forward with that, then we'll more formalize the process, but at least open the door and have the conversation. I don't think we need to hire a consultant to be able to have that conversation.
I agree, we, I agree with you. We do not need to hire a consultant to have the conversation itself, but in order to put the pieces in the proper locations and to give you what I thought you were looking for, I do believe we should hire, because our staff is stretched thin, Commissioner. They really are, and I don't want to lose any more staff, because we've got them stretched so thin, and we're pushing these important projects through. If we can get the consultant on, but once we bring it back to you in December after the discussion, at least allow us to consider hiring a consultant or FAU, ULI, FIU, it doesn't matter, but to assist our staff in getting the details so that when we bring it back to the board after the December discussion that you want to have, we at least have all the pieces in play.
I'm not really, are we still talking about the ag reserve here? Because I have a lot of people that have been here all day. It's four o'clock, and the bulk of the direction that you're trying to give is on a, on a, what I would recall was a land swap that would probably, in all fairness, decimate the agricultural reserve, and I don't think this is at all the proper form to initiate this conversation.
This is why this damn workshop was asked for in the first place. I love Commissioner Sacks, but she's not the one who asked for this workshop. In May, I asked for this workshop for two reasons. I asked for this workshop to consider transferring development rights from one area to the county to the ag reserve to protect farming in that community and to provide an environmental benefit. The second part of that request was to talk about establishing workforce housing in the ag reserve. This is why we are here today. It's not for all of the other reasons that ended up on the paper. I made that request, staff, you all agreed to it, staff scheduled this workshop. That is precisely why we are here today. It's the one thing we haven't talked about. I'm asking you to bring it back to us in December to have that conversation.
Well, why wasn't it, I wasn't aware that's what the basis of this workshop was. I apologize. I thought it was more related to request, and I, and I don't mean to offend you. I thought it was a request that Commissioner Sacks brought to the board to talk about issues in the agricultural reserve tier, and that's what the title of the workshop is. Why wasn't this addressed if this was the whole basis of the workshop, Mr.?
A week ago, when we had a commission meeting, Commissioner Weiss brought up, when we talked about how we were spending the federal dollars, and Commissioner Weiss, you brought up some ideas on how this workshop should move forward. I made the same exact comments 10 days ago, about wanting to make sure both of these components were discussed today. I have been consistent in the reason for requesting this workshop.
Commissioner Sacks?
This is exactly why we need a consultant, Commissioner McKinley. We have either that or we need some, a facilitator, or we need someone to, staff cannot do it. I've been, I've been working with staff the last four weeks, every, probably twice a week for the last four weeks, and they're overwhelmed, and this is an issue that started way before, probably you were still in school when this thing started, this whole agricultural workshop, the whole agricultural reserve, and the day is late. So I would recommend or suggest that possibly, we've had enough public outcry. We've had enough, I, I don't think I need to hear from anybody else, and I don't think anybody else wants to say anything because they had the opportunity. We, as commissioners, I would say, know what the issues are that face the agricultural reserve in this county commission. So I would suggest that, that we table this until the next BCC meeting, but in the meantime, we've got a recommendation by the University of Flori, I'm sorry, just looking at you and thinking University of Florida. But if they would like to get involved, we could certainly get one of the universities involved. Heck, they're going to build a tech center in the center of West Palm Beach, but Florida Atlantic University has a land use school. They have, they have architecture. He spoke here today. I think maybe before we even get to the hiring of a consultant, why don't we have them give us a recommendation as to what would be the best and the highest use of the land that still remains in the reserve for us to develop or whatever would be the best thing for the citizens of the ag reserve and the citizens of the county? But I think that at this point, we've had enough public work, we've had enough public speaking, certainly the staff, I think, in my estimation, and Patrick, you can speak up for them, and certainly Ms. Baker, but I don't think the staff today, as it exists, can handle this in a way that would give us a rather reasonable time for them to respond, because we have people here that want to sell their land, they want to keep their land, they want to develop. We have an obligation to business as well to respond. So I, my recommendation, Mr. Mayor, is to allow scholarly academic research on this issue and to give it back to us in a reasonable amount of time so that we can make the decision as to whether we need to hire consultants or that what is the next step to take, because my recommendation follows the fact that staff just is not possibly adept at this time, not adept, but just their workforce and the amount of time and expertise it would take would make it very difficult for them to come back in a reasonable time.
So would you would like, was it the FAU professor or?
The School of Architecture and the school, and they have a college, they have of land use and development, and if anybody else wants to bring in a scholarly Florida commission on this or a recommendation on this, I would, I would strongly recommend it so that we could get a timely response, Commissioner McKinley, because I know that's what you want, in terms of what we should do now for the, for these issues that surround the ag reserve.
In the tier, in the agricultural reserve tier. I have no objection if that's the desired result that you would like to see from this workshop. I can only speak for myself, but I would love to see that. I think we do have an obligation to round this, this process out, but with all due respect, that's a far different conversation than what Commissioner McKinley is now suggesting, and I don't see how they happen in confluence. I just don't, they can't. They're in opposite, they're opposite of each other.
It's two conversations that we need to have. All I am asking is allow for a presentation to this board on that swap idea in December. We are approving the federal, the spending of federal dollars, 75 million of that is for environmental projects. Some of those environmental projects that were presented to us last week include a project through this part of the county that could be very beneficial if that land were in county ownership. This is a timely conversation. I'm giving, I am requesting staff direction to bring this back. That particular piece, just back to us for a presentation in December, the zoning meeting on December 15.
All right. Are there, let's take some comments on that request, which is not part of this workshop, with all due respect, but are there any other comments on that request? Commissioner Bernard?
I think Commissioner Marino, but I can.
Thank you. I've been relatively quiet, but one of the things that, the mission of the master plan was also water resources in the ag reserve, but the $150 million bond referendum sent $50 million to the north end of the county for water resources, roughly $50 million. And what Commissioner McKinley is talking about would enhance that $50 million investment. So I would appreciate a continued conversation on what Commissioner McKinley was talking about. I think it is imperative, because we're going to, we're going to be spending $75 million in the future. We, we haven't really talked about water resources in our discussion today. That is why we have preserve land and its water resources. And to comment on, Matt Gittgen was here earlier. He is from Jupiter Farms, and Jupiter Farms was one of the beneficiaries of some of that $50 million. But, you know, stormwater provides water filtration, and it's a buffer, and it recharges the aquifer, and these are things that are important to the entire county. So if it is for the greater good of the county, we need to hear the presentation in December. So that's one half. The other half is, as for today's discussion, I think what's important for staff to take away from this and for us to, the conversation is, we've been inundated with requests for workforce housing, so we need to come up with a number. What is the, what is the number of units we want to put on these less-than-8% lands that are left? And if we do that, what effect does it have on the properties that have already come before them? Do we open Pandora's box, and if so, how? I think that's one issue. The other issue is the industrial issue. We do need light industrial, and I don't see why we can't condition it, but I'm not, I don't write these ordinances. Obviously, we're the BCC, we vote on them. Our word seems to be the last word, so it needs to be the smart one and the right one that's legal and can be followed by law. So I think there is some room for light industrial, and we need to figure out what the right wording is for it, and as you said, P is for permitting. I don't think it is something that needs to be decided at that, and I'm not going to say this properly, so I apologize in advance, that lower level of government, especially since it impacts so many people. So if it has to come up to the BCC level, then we need to figure out a way to word that. And also, our preserve lands are preserved as long as they say they're preserved, as long as we say they're preserved. But when we floated the $150 million bond, we were telling everybody, "We're preserving this land." So we need to preserve the land that's in preserve now and not trade it off for anything else, and if we put it in preserve, it's there for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to weigh in on a couple, a couple of issues. In regards to what Commissioner McKinley is bringing up, this is something that I do support, to have a discussion regarding water resources, not just only in the ag reserves, but throughout the whole county, and I support for us to have the discussion in December. Since we're going to be discussing other issues in terms of water projects in the future, then that's perfect timing. In regards to the workforce, the workforce housing out in the ag reserves, we know that we need it, and we need to find ways to come up with a, working with staff, and I don't support going with consultants after consultants after consultants and delays and delays. I've been here for five years, and it'll take another five years to get another consultant to give us a response, and I'm tired of all of these consultant, that's going to take so long. We have six, I think, six families, like, they said six parcels, the Logans, the Linkes, the Mulvaughes, the Vargas. They've been here for five years, and I don't know why it takes so long for us to address their issues, but we need to figure out a way and quit having them come here over and over again when we can finally make a decision that can at least address their needs. That's with the workforce housing, and Commissioner Marino says, in regards to the light industry, that's something that I'd love to work with staff and see how we can craft something that is beneficial for the county. You know, Marty Perry had mentioned the Brookside property. You know, I haven't had the chance to see, some of these projects, we haven't had a chance to even hear it as a commission. So I think that we need to start hearing these, these projects, so in that way, we can actually weigh in as a board and not just staff to make a decision in terms of blocking it, so in that way, we're not, we're not weighing in at all on some of these projects. So these are my comments for now. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner McKinley?
I had one more simple request. Actually, I could use some of it right now. Mr. Rice, a lot of people have made comments about hemp farming and medical marijuana farming. We'd all benefit from a little bit of that right now, but could you email? But could you email to us some comments on how it's difficult because of regulations that the legislature has put in place? It's not just, it's not that easy. People can't just go and grow their own marijuana. So could you just send to us some information on what would work and what wouldn't work?
Yes, I can. Yeah. It is a process. The process is doable, and we've got a good network that's got that information. I'll get it to you.
Okay. And if you have anybody with samples, let us know.
All right. Commissioner Sax, did you want to respond?
We just get better and better as the hour gets later. Pretty soon, it'll be happy hour. But anyways, the, I, I would, I go along with Commissioner McKinley's request to, to have a study on the water issues. I think that this is something that's, and I think that Commissioner Bernard brought it up as well, and, and also Commissioner Marino. There's a lot of issues. And I think that, a lot of issues for us to tackle. What has been a problem is that it just takes so darn long. And so families and businesses need certainty, and, and they need, they need direction. But we also need direction. And I had the opportunity to go out and look at sites, but I know the board members maybe have not had that opportunity to go out and look at sites. But it's been in my district, so I should go out and, and get boots on and tromp around and see exactly what they're all concerned about. But I think we need to have a more hands-on approach. And I think that by either, and I don't know the, I haven't been here a year yet, but if we don't want to hire consultants, if they take too long, let's just go with the university academics who said that they would do it for us. And, and let's move forward and have them study water issues. There's no reason why we have to keep everything so contained. And the issues that we're facing in the ag reserve with, with regard to housing, we need to know what kind of housing can be built on the lands that we have. We also need to know how we can promote those farmers who want to sell their land so that, so it gets done. And then we need to know how we can move forward on, on county issues with regard to water. So I don't know what the next procedure would be, Mr. Mayor, but if we could move forward with the recommendation that we, we, we bring in FAU or any other accommodation that somebody would, would like to put in, then let's move forward on it. And.
Mr. Rutter, you, you and I spoke before the meeting about some immediate staffing issues that you guys have because of some court issues going on separate from this. And you mentioned the 11-3 meeting as more appropriate. Were you saying that it would be possible to bring some of these items, options back on 11-3?
I don't think.
Or to get direction from us on 11-3?
I was following the line of thinking from the vice mayor, the discussion about the board having 48 hours, if you will, to think about the points of direction. To that point, then, I would say and really strongly request of the board to hold off on the direction point until next Wednesday. Our comp plan hearing on Wednesday, November 3rd. Would really appreciate that, and I hope everyone understands that's just a few days later. But then we'd have our full staffing available again that day.
Is everybody okay with 11-3? We're going to have a sort of a more directional focus and decision about what we're bringing back to the board. We'll have that conversation on 11-3. I don't think we're talking about bringing specific items back on 11-3, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I just wanted to mention that we do have two site-specific items going that day for transmittal, the Reserve at Atlantic and Los Farms. But one, Los Farms is going for industrial and Reserve at Atlantic for the residential, so we were hoping for today's decisions to be applied to those. If we could have direction of the board, I believe, at the beginning of that hearing.
I'd prefer that they postpone those items, so now that we can weigh in. I assume those are, they're very much related to what we're discussing today.
They're exactly what we're discussing today, correct?
I mean, I don't want to get into the business of mandating that they pull those applications. Commissioner Sax, they're in your district. Would you like to have those adjudicated on, on the next zoning hearing, 11-3? Or that's on the 20?
Comp plan transmittal hearing, 11-3, next Wednesday.
I think that if they've already been scheduled, they should go forward and take their chances. I don't know, you know, I'm not on that, I'm not, I just, you know, I think that we're in a state of flux.
We're, we're in a state of change, it seems like, and I can recognize that.
Right. And I think that if they, if they want to move forward, that's their decision. It's a business. They make that business decision. But I think that if, as a county commissioner, I think we are in a state of, of flux and change, as the county is changing. And go ahead and have their, have their hearing, but I think I look forward to having a lot of more changes that we're going to, I think we're all in, sort of heard a lot today, that we're going to move forward with the changes.
Would you envision our conversations on this, the, the two-direction pieces that you need to be prior to their applications being heard or after?
That would be preferable, and then, since it's transmittal, then we could then work with the applicants between transmittal and adoption on any changes or decisions that the board makes that morning of the, of the hearing.
That's fine. Then we'll go ahead and do that. Commissioner Marino, and then I'll get to Commissioner Weiss. I'm not forgetting you, Commissioner Weiss. There's just a lot of going on over here, and I wanted to try to put a, put a bow on it. Commissioner Marino?
Well, Commissioner Weiss, wait, since you, you haven't said anything, and I'm sort of continuing my conversation, why don't you go ahead, and I, I'm happy to follow you. Conversation, and, because I'll just wrap up what I have to say. I just wanted to make, to remind everyone that if we release or change any of the preserve requirements here in the ag reserve, it's going to be like a domino effect around the rest of the county. So we really have to be mindful of the decisions that we make here because they are, I mean, they are going to affect the rest of the county.
You mean removing conservation easements and things? I didn't know that that was really part of the conversation, to be honest with you.
It was part of the, part of the presentation. It's part of the master plan. It was part of the chronology. So it, Brookside is, you know, they, they purchased land discounted because it was, the, the development rights were removed from it, yet they want us, they're coming here now to request to put, use that property. So we really need to be very cognizant of what our decisions are going to be if we do anything with land that is in conservation.
Okay. Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. And I did put my boots on and go out to the ag reserve, Commissioner Sax. And I want to thank Mr. O'Donnell with Irish Acres for his hospitality and taking me around out there. I guess, and I'm fine with, with what we agreed or what we're going to agree with Vice Mayor's comments regarding really giving staff direction on Thursday. But I want, as we're, we've been here all day, and, and I just, I want to circle back around from sort of where we started, which is, number one, to thank you all for everything you've, you've done in the past and you will continue in the future. I also want to, I think we, you know, we, we sometimes, as we're talking about these things, we lose sight of the success. And I know we've talked about it today, but the success of, of accomplishing what was set out with the ag reserve, that clearly 58% of all the land out there has now been put into preservation. That was, I think, the initial, that was the goal of what, I mean, it was 60%, and we still have a little more to go. But there, it, it, it has worked. Now we've got a few loose ends. I, that's the way I see it. We have a few loose ends that need, still need to be tied up. There's some things, you know, as we've talked about, this idea of not having any workforce housing or essential housing, not only not allowed, I guess it could be allowed, but not even required. Everywhere else you build, in unincorporated Palm Beach County, you build over five units, you have a requirement to contribute and be a part of the solution for our workforce housing. And how we have an area as large as this that has always been exempted from that is sort of a mystery, and I, and I guess we'll never really fully understand it. You tried to bring us up to that. But I do want to celebrate what has been accomplished there and to acknowledge the fact of the work of staff and the work of the people who live out there and work out there and the development that's happened out there, understanding and working around these requirements. But we do have a few things still to close up. And then I also want to also remind, and, and as you're thinking about this over the next couple of days, I think Mr. O'Donnell's comments, I mean, about the rural parkway, the issue with farm vehicles trying to travel down these now, some, in some cases, suburban roads, where we also have tracts of, of land, and we only allow a nine, I think it's 900 square foot house for the caretakers that live on these properties and take care of these nurseries and farms. Is that really, does that still make sense today? You know, the idea of having essential housing, workforce housing, we talked about, and it's a really only 5% total land remaining left out there. We've talked about the six parcels, and it, it's time, we have to find a solution for those families. I can't agree with you more, Commissioner Bernard, on that. And we, we need to find a solution for them. And I think, and I think it's within our grasp to get there in the next, next few days. So, and I also totally support having a discussion in December about water here and water resources. That's probably the, the biggest existential threat that Palm Beach County, the country faces going forward. And then also, I want to thank the residents who came out and spoke on, on behalf of agriculture. So often, you know, we hear, you know, in the media, agriculture not being supported, and here today, we saw the support coming out for agriculture, which is such an important part of our county and our, our economy here, and for, as everybody else has mentioned, their comments as to the importance to our national security and, and our food supply. So I, I want to thank you all for your, for your efforts today, and I really appreciate everybody coming out and, and sharing their thoughts, and I, and definitely you've been heard.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. And I'll just close by saying I, I very much adopt all of your, all of your thoughts in terms of direction and the history and value and, and were final product of the ag reserve. It's something that I believe, people tell me all the time, oh, it, you know, it didn't work, or we should just do this because we should give up on it. It's not something that I'm not, I'm going to give up on. I think it's done a heck of a job in putting lands into conservation and preservation, and I think the results speak for themselves, and the results are great. That doesn't mean that some people weren't left behind and that this board can't try to find a way to accommodate that with the larger policy goals in mind. But I have and will continue to fight for the ag reserve, and I think it's something worth fighting for. As a tangential issue that Commissioner McKinley brought up, water resources is, is an issue of the day, and we've allocated, I think, $75 million to that issue generally. And I know that the administration has some very good ideas. I think this board should have the, the workshop on water resources as, as a countywide issue, and I think that'll give us a great opportunity. As you know, I brought up a bond referendum a couple of years ago, many of which those projects are contained within the ARPA funding, and I think that we can have a paradigm shift in protecting the water resources in this county in the future with the help of those monies that the federal government has given back to us. And so I look forward to commenting and giving better direction on the two issues before us today, the ag reserve tier, residential and industrial on the 3rd.
Wednesday?
On Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 3rd.
Wednesday, November 3rd. I'd love to have Commissioner Sax's recommendation as part of that going forward, the FAU professor and, and the institute working with us on that. And, you know, policymaking is, is a difficult process sometimes, and we're experiencing that today. But I will tell you that this board is very much committed to, to making sure we do the right thing at the, at the end of the day. So thank you for sticking with us today. Did anyone have any other comments? Usually I give our board a comment on anything else. I think we've had it today. So with that said, thank you very much for your comments today and your work. Anything else, Mr. Rutter?
Sorry, I hate to do this, but I am going to do it. I'll make, make sure we're clear at the end of the day. We're taking no direction from today. We'll come back to you next Wednesday to seek that direction. Would the board like us to try and at least consolidate some of these thoughts so we can get, have a document in front of you for what we heard? This is not our opinion. There's nothing subjective going on from our perspective, but at least to try and put them in black and white in front of you to capture what we're hearing is the larger thoughts? Would that?
To the best of your ability, I would.
To the best of our ability, yes.
The board would say yes, but let me let Commissioner Sax weigh in. Her light is illuminated.
I honestly, and thank you, Patrick, for saying that. I honestly think we've heard everything we can, we can. You have 100 and maybe 40-page PowerPoint that you put on. We have heard from anybody who has wanted to speak. We've had an excellent public forum, and congratulations to my colleagues for handling this all day. But enough. I think we've heard enough. There's, if anything I want to know, I'll refer to your PowerPoint. But I think anything more that is not, first of all, public, that we have just heard now, I think would not serve our purpose. I will, I will certainly review everything that we've done so far and everybody that, and everyone that we've heard, but I think now it's time to stop, move forward, and, and put something together from it.
And I think he's referring to synthesizing some of our thoughts and direction from the board into a document to sort of crystallize the issues a little bit.
And I ask that just to see if, from the board's perspective, there's value to us trying to do that. I wouldn't want to portray it as a comprehensive list, but at least to, I think we put our heads together, we can coalesce around a number of ideas. Certainly understand some of the commissioner's points.
I think you guys can.
If that serves a purpose, though, we could bring that as a slide on Wednesday to at least have something to look at.
Very good. And then, are you okay with that? It's not new information, it's just trying to.
Correct.
Corral what we've.
Correct.
Sort of haphazardly put forward to them.
Excellent. Okay. That, that would be fine.
All right. Commissioner McKinley?
And Patrick, just to clarify, you've got a presentation to prepare for us for the November 3rd meeting, and then one to prepare for us for December 15th. So there's two items you're walking away with today.
What's the second item?
The December 15th one would be the conversation about the preservation in the Indian Trail Grove property and how we can maybe transfer their development rights elsewhere and protect that land, the whole.
But you mentioned that it was, you wanted it in county's ownership.
I do. And so.
So purchasing, or you're?
How about if we let them do a presentation with their proposal? How about they, we give, we've already given staff direction, meet with GL Homes and discuss their proposal with them, and bring us back a presentation on that proposal on December 15th? Is that clear enough?
With GL to do the presentation or the county to do the presentation?
Both.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
The presentation on the proposal, yes.
All right. But just so we're clear, the, the workshop is broader than the TDR issue, right? You said water resources at large.
Good God. They have almost 5,000 acres of contiguous farmland that right now is in active agricultural production that could be used for an environmental restoration project that is currently on the SERP plan for Everglades restoration. If, if that Everglades restoration project is ever to come to fruition, or that 5,000 acres of contiguous, that being the key word, farmland is to be protected, they can't allow development on that. So they have a, I believe they're going to have a proposal prepared to talk about where that development could occur. One of the places where that development could occur is where they're already developing, and that is the ag reserve. I don't know how much clearer you want me to be about that, Mayor. They have a proposal. Let them bring it to us and present it. Let them meet with staff, and let staff and the applicant, not the applicant, but the proposer, show us what they're talking about instead of us sitting up here talking in code. Let's just put it out there in the public and see what they're talking about, and we'll go from there.
All right. Well, they had an application that they took out of the county's jurisdiction. I don't think we're talking in code. I think you've now been crystal clear. Is that something you can accommodate?
To be clear, from our perspective, what we know about the proposal goes back in time when they actually made an application. We had it, and they withdrew it. We would need to reach out to them again and find out if there are any changes to it. It would be easier. We could certainly provide the information on what was done five years ago and go a little more comprehensively. That can be done, if that's the board's direction. We don't have a live application in front of us, though.
Correct. And that's why I'm asking, giving staff direction, to go and have that conversation and bring something back to us. It's not rocket science.
It's just unusual to, to have. It's just unusual to, to have, I mean, why don't they just submit an application? I've never had a scenario where the county commissioner is saying, go find out what they want in their application and bring it back to the board for adjudication. That's why we have an application process.
Because it would require changes to the Ag Reserve, which was the purpose of this workshop today. It should've been more clearly discussed, but somehow the purpose of this workshop got sidetracked.
Well, I apologize to my colleagues if we think the workshop was sidetracked, but the issue wasn't brought up until after hours and hours and hours of presentations by professional staff and by members of the public.
Commissioner Kerner, when I made this request for this workshop in May, I was crystal clear what I was asking for. I was crystal clear in what I hoped would be discussed at this meeting two weeks ago, or a week ago, whenever we last sat here and we had that Todd presented to us, the proposed list of environmental projects that we would be using federal dollars on. Commissioner Weiss brought up what he hoped under his commissioner comments at that meeting, what he hoped would be the outcome of this workshop. I commented on his comments and talked about this idea. It is an idea. I just want staff to evaluate the idea and for us to hear it, to see if it's something we would even consider. It's the first step. It's no different than everything else we've talked about today, this whole idea of workforce housing. Well, we're giving staff direction to go back and talk about how we could do workforce housing in the Ag Reserve. There is no specific proposal before us today. It's the same thing. There's no specific proposal. It's an idea. So go have a conversation and bring it back to us, and let's decide as a board if it's something we wanna move forward with. That's it.
All right. Mr. Rutter, is that acceptable?
I understand the direction of the board. We will reach out to the property owner, understand, come to understand where their mindset is, any changes that there might be to their proposal from five years ago, and report back to the board on that.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right. With that, the board is adjourned. Thank you.